Ross Street, are we getting that? Or it's kind of dangerous.
Yes, dust control today.
Today, on the whole thing?
Just intersections and houses.
Well, it's kind of dangerous, lightweight dangers. Because for some reason, we didn't have any wind, so. As long as we get something on. I followed a car last night and couldn't see nothing. Which is supposed to rain tomorrow, so hopefully we do it.
It's working here, it's just not up on the TV. In a sense, it'll just work fine.
Alright, that's eight thirty, we're starting the legislative meetings. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in its soul with liberty and justice for all. First thing we need to do is to approve the agenda, so I'll second the movement, say this. Any discussions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Most of yours, I guess just a note for the minutes. I'm aware of that. Uh, Heather thought that he had mentioned that last week, that he was gonna be on.
He was gonna be on all weekend.
Oh, we should have said that. Uh, public comments. Any public comments? Garrett?
No, Doug's first, he's on the air.
He's standing up.
Is that door locked down?
Yeah, it is, I did not unlock it yet, sorry.
My public comments are going to be this. First off, I'd like to know what that new bridge, I know we left the bids probably prior to Ben or right about E forty-three Duponda. I'd like to know what the cost of that bridge was so that we can haul Phase Two turbine apparatus because it wasn't going to pass the heavier weight inspections, which Ben said it was not going to pass the heavier weight inspections. So, that bid was left probably, I don't know, maybe two and a half, three years ago. Um, I'd like to know the cost of that because we only got a million and a half dollars, quite, not quite, for the negotiations with the turbine people. I bet the bridge cost about that much, I'd like to, I can go back in my notes and find that. I don't know if I'll probably find that easier here. So, maybe, maybe we got enough to pay for that bridge. So, we've been told all this year that bridge is going to go out, so why do we not have dust control yet? I know of several farmers that have called the engineer's office, including Roger that just left, wanting to know why there's no dust control. It is extremely dangerous, he said kind of dangerous, no, it's extremely dangerous. Do I care about myself? No. But I do care about the farmers that are walking down the road, I've announced where I've been down the road, but they're all up. One after another, after another, after another, and we're not even harvesting it. So, I want to know why Ben promised last week to several people, including myself, that there was going to be dust control on that road by the end of the week, and now there's not. And now I want to know why there are weeds all over Tamen County and what the weed people are doing, and since this is already September, what have they been doing all summer? Those are all my questions for this morning. And there's a lot of idle lying promises in this room, and a lot of deceit. Am I the judge? No. But there is certainly somebody that's watching over the top of this room. Thank you.
Alright, anybody else? God, please, thank you. I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for some of the tough decisions you've had to make over the last, since you've been in office. You gotta wear a lot of hats, you gotta spread pretty thin. And I just want to start off by thanking you for all the work you're doing. The message our Sunday gospel last Sunday was humility. And I think it sounds well-known to turn about once in a while, and I still can't understand, I'm gonna touch your ears a little bit, why isn't Heather part of the negotiating team to use agreement with our developers on the curb? Do you have an answer? Well, when I look at this agreement, you are looking at this agreement again later in the meeting, aren't you? We'll amend it. I sure hope so, because to me, this is more of an ultimatum than it is agreement. You're kind of leaving zoning administrator out a lot of it. You haven't been patient enough to wait for the zoning board to come up with a decent whack, which we will, we'll give it a little time. This part about hinder on behalf of the VOS or anybody in the Tamen County to hinder or stop or slow down results in litigation or suing. And if, and in that event, the county side with the Board of Supervisors or with the development against the citizens, that doesn't make any sense to me. That's just wrong. And I looked, read through the decommissioning plan, and I'm not a lawyer, but it looks to me like they're going to use the funds for their salvage value on a decommissioning to pay for the decommissioning. And that isn't going to work. We can do better than that, a lot better than that. You know, they, developers keep talking about their vested interests, and the judges keep talking about vested interests. What about our interests? What about the people of the county's interest? I know three of you on that board, Decurz, Heather, and David a little bit from working at the FSA office, I don't know you at all, Mark, I don't know if you're from this county originally or not. People of this county have got their heart and soul in this county, and they love the beauty of nature of the county and the trees, the hills, just the natural beauty, and slapping up twenty-seven more turbines in order to get one point two million dollars is a little bit done in haste, I agree. They're in a hurry, developers are, because they got a deadline, the subsidies are going to run out. Other words, our tax money is going to run out, it's helping them build these, well, some of us don't even agree with them. So, please be patient. Don't jump into these agreements and the dream of building twenty-seven more turbines when you've got a lot of Tamen County people that don't even want them. Thank you. Anybody else?
I have a question. So, I did see you were considering revising the settlement agreement, and I do hope, because right now it seems very not beneficial to the county as a whole, and not just because they're calling out the zoning administrator specifically, but there are a few portions. So, first of all, in Iowa code, through thirty-five point nine, says the administrative officer has authorized to enforce the resolutions and ordinances adopted by supervisors. I would hope that you would consider adding a clause to the settlement that says the zoning administrator may do their duties as, you know, as allowed by Iowa code and our ordinance as well mentions that. If we say that the zoning administrator is not allowed to go and monitor the construction as we do with other construction projects, there may be issues with, you know, citizen complaints that could be mitigated that way. If the administrator is not allowed to go and complete those duties, we could cause additional issues for the county. And so if you add a stipulation within the bounds of, you know, enforcing the ordinances as stated by state law, that would be, I think that would be beneficial. For page two, part B, I'm willing to review again any additional materials that they have provided you since I had met them on July thirtieth to review their submission requirements. They haven't sent me any additional materials, so I don't know what they've sent you. But from what they sent me and I forwarded on to you my concerns, there were at least ten bullet points where they had not met our submission requirements. And so if they do not meet those, I would suggest not signing that statement that says you agree that they have met all of the requirements because that would be not meeting the requirements. And it's a submission for application, not a submission prior to construction. The whole point of submitting these for requirements is to review them before deciding to approve or not. And then per per both the Iowa code and our own ordinances, the Board of Adjustment is the one that has the jurisdiction to issue those conditional use permits, and I do highly recommend that you allow that process to occur. With a project like this, it does go through the Board of Supervisors after any approval by the Board of Adjustment if it gets approved, so you could add on those additional stipulations such as decommissioning, or those could be part of the conditional use. So, it's not like if we don't do the settlement agreement, we have no option, recourse. And then, let's see. I would like you to consider adding a section about nothing in the settlement pertains to any future reconstruction or revisions or repowering projects that occur, that is the initial construction only. I know Heather was considering having zoning department or zoning commission do a repowering agreement or repowering ordinance. If you, I was just stipulating this, that this does not apply to any future repowering, otherwise you're holding back any future regulations we may want to have for repowering. And then also, it's a little vague with the permit discussions in here, which could apply to future Board of Adjustment applications as far as repowering or variance requests. That could be stipulated, that would be very beneficial, I believe, for the county. And then also, per the Iowa code, there's a section that says that nobody is allowed to seek costs against the Board of Adjustment if it goes to, if it goes to district court. In the settlement, it says that the losing party would provide those costs. But if they're not legally allowed to go up to the Board of Adjustment, are we offering up those costs of the county if someone go, if they go against the Board of Adjustment for a decision that they make, and for some reason, the judge sides with them? That seems like we're offering up a payment that we would not need to per Iowa code. I had another point I might say, but it's perfect. It just seems like a lot of this is is only beneficial for the applicant and not for the county. I guess the last point I have is, they do stipulate in here that they claim vested rights because they spent money for the research to apply for this, and they spent time to apply for this. Nothing in our ordinance or state code gives any expectation that just simply applying and spending the money to apply grants any expectation of a who. And I don't know any other situation that does that. They've got a kid that slacks off all their life, straight B student, but you paid for private school and you paid for that application Harvard, do you expect them to get into Harvard? No, you expect their application to get them into whatever college they apply for. The application needs to be reviewed. And I I again, entering what I said last week, they haven't been permitted anything yet, so this is a totally different situation legal-wise. They should not have any expectation unless you have said something that nobody else in the public knows about. They should not have an expectation of approval just based on spending the money for the research and the application process. They knew what our application process was going in, we've had it for fourteen plus years. And just simply getting by with it previously, not having to provide a turbine model previously, not having to strictly follow ordinances previously, I mean, that's like a small town, small town police chief, any small town. You know, they're they're at the point where they're like, yeah, we'll just let everybody do twenty miles an hour over rolling stop signs, it's fine. Where the law still says stop sign, speed limit. They move on to another city, get a new police chief in, and they're like, well, stop sign means stop. So, this is kind of the same thing, they're expecting us to bypass our ordinances that we did before, and I think we should follow those ordinances. We should require the submission materials that we have asked for. They knew what those materials were coming in. If those submission materials are all in order, they shouldn't have a problem going through the Board of Adjustment process. If they're not planning to violate our ordinances, they shouldn't have such a worry about adding these stipulations against the Board of Adjustment or my own intention to not keep them in check. I really hope you consider allowing this to go through the Board of Adjustment instead of going to the settlement agreement. But if you do go through the settlement agreement, I hope you do consider changes that help fortify the county a little more, thank you.
What submission requirements were you trying?
I sent an email to all of you with the bullet points that I told them they were deficient on their submission requirements, primarily in multiple areas where they had not provided a turbine model. They said they would not provide an engineer certificate until after they were approved before construction, which is opposite of what the order is. We don't have a clarification on if their ground clearance is going to be met because we don't know what turbine model. Their research is based off multiple turbine models, which can manipulate the results. So, they would need a turbine model so that we know how that relates to their research and their studies that they have submitted. There were a few other areas, I believe I've got the email in my bag, I can try to report it after the meeting. But I had sent that to you after I met with them, so you knew what I had considered deficiencies within the ordinance, not necessarily subjective opinion, but actual, they're not following the ordinance parts. Which I would suggest making sure those are followed before you say that we agree that they are. Otherwise, you're going to be signing essentially an untrue, so. Any questions?
Good, I just want to respond. In the ruling that Judge Gox put out on July third, specifically it says this, the county argued, this is at the injunctive relief hearing, the county argued that the hearing, at the hearing, that the turbines being erected are different models to the ones mentioned in the application. The testimony at the hearing is that while they may be different models, they're substantially the same as the models listed in the application. The models actually being used are slightly shorter than the models listed in the application. Updated studies have been completed, such as noise studies, no evidence was presented at the hearing, that the new turbine models are different in any significant way to the models which were mentioned in the application. There were also testimony, was also testimony that some wires and lines need to be moved from one location to another for various reasons. There is an explanation made by the defendant on why the new plan is significantly different enough to make it outside the scope of the cup. The application clearly anticipated electrical wires being buried underground connecting turbines to substation, but the exact location will need to be adjusted upon factors determined at a later date. The defendants failed to establish the new lines and their new position changed the plant sufficiently to make it outside the true cup. And that starts out by saying the court defines that the construction is well within the scope of the cup. And so, even though the argument that you're wanting to be made is that they're not meeting the ordinance currently, we argued that in court already, and the court found that it was well within the scope of the cup.
But in that case, we had already issued a, we had already issued building permits, and they didn't have enough evidence to overturn. It's like in sports, you need more evidence to overturn a rule. In this case, we are asking that they provide a model, and they're not providing what we're requiring them to provide.
They also didn't there, and they found contrary to what you think that they would find this stuff.
But I think the difference is in that one, it was already approved, they relied upon the cup and the building permit. It was prior mistakes made by prior VOA and members to not follow the ordinance. So, that's, so like the WEX submittal requirements in our ordinance and the Tamen County ordinance, submittal requirements, in addition to the submittal requirements defined for conditional use permit applications, all applications for C WEX must submit the following information. So, it doesn't say may, or they should, it says they must. And number four is a description of the project including number type, nameplate, generated capacity, tower height, rotor diameter, and total height of all wind turbines and means of interconnecting with the electrical grid. And then number six is engineer certification as required in the supplemental standards. So, the difference is, it should have never been approved, and it was, and the judge was like, yeah, I get it, it's been approved for five years. They've already started constructing, he was just going to let it go because it was within the parameters. But based on our ordinances, if we want to follow it, and I'm, I mean, I'm pretty clear, I'm a rule follower. It says must, it must. They needed to have it in there, they've had five years since the last permit was submitted. They had time to read it, understand it, and submit it correctly, and did they? No. I mean, that's, that's the fact, is it's a must. I get what the judge said on the prior thing, but I don't think that applies to a Board of Adjustment. And Iowa code and our ordinances has the right to go in, review the conditional use permit request, does it follow our ordinances? And every single manner, yes or no. Just one failure of meeting something in our ordinance is a rejection, and we've had legal tell us that in the past, too.
Yeah, I'm a lawyer, I was at the hearing, and we argued that same exact point, that you can't, you can't rely on an illegally issued permit for any vested right. And the judge found, this is, this is, that was the argument that we had made, and the judge had found that they were well within the scope with the turbines that they had listed at the court.
But again, this is a different situation where they don't have the permit that was already issued, they don't have, they shouldn't have an expectation of approval or an expectation of us to bypass our laws based on previous laws. You always say previous boards should not bind future board decisions. If we decide to go by our ordinances, we have that right, and I don't see a judge, I mean, I don't see why a judge would not back up a county that's trying to follow laws that were passed by public hearing, passed by, passed by boards. And I mean, they've been established for, like I said, fourteen plus years before they submitted their application. It's not like it's a recent thing where they were expecting a previous ordinance. We're not requiring them to go off any new ordinance, you're allowing them to go since they had applied before the moratorium, which I understand. But they should still go through our Board of Adjustment as is listed in our ordinance. They're the ones with the jurisdiction for conditional use permits. They have that right to approve or deny. Like I said, studying the money on an application should not give an expectation of automatic approval. And if we're, if we are asking in our ordinance to submit certain requirements, if we want to enforce those requirements, the county should have the right to do so.
I agree, I just think that it's a futile effort when the judge has already ruled in the other, the other party's favor, not specifically this party, but in a very similar argument, in a very similar court, where we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to try to defend the ordinance. We were not. It was found that it wasn't in our.
Well, then I'm also just saying you should not say that they meet our ordinance if they're not meeting our ordinance, just take that line out and don't say that they're meeting it if they're not, because they're not. As they had submitted it previously, unless they have given you additional documents that they have not given me, they are not meeting our ordinance. And I just, if they follow our ordinance, no professional objection to it. But right now, they're not, and my, it's very vague in the Iowa code and our ordinance, what my duty there, but the one thing it specifically states is that I am supposed to enforce our county ordinances. And this would not be allowing me to do so.
Let me just respond real quick, and then you can go to. When we're saying that they're meeting the ordinances, what we're is that the judge, I mean, we're agreeing that the judge had found that previous, the same argument was found that they were meeting the ordinances. And it's well within the scope of it.
I do not agree with that because that was a different situation.
That all you want, but it was, it came from a judge in the same system that we're trying to go into.
I'm sorry, don't be arguing, it was a different situation.
It's not really a different situation, I do agree, they already had their, those are the two mitigating best factors. They already had their cup, they already had their permits. I agree with that. The only thing that's lacking is the time, but they had their permit, they had their application in before we put in the the moratorium to put in a new ordinance, and so then
I agree, yeah.
All of those are based on the old ordinance, not the new one.
Right. And all of my arguments are based off the old ordinance, we don't have a new ordinance yet. So, yeah, all that Heather listed off her submission requirements are based on the existing old ordinance from twenty ten. And they're still not meeting them, they're expecting us to relax in our.
Your opinion is they're not meeting them, the judge's opinion is that they were.
I think the judge's opinion was that he didn't have enough evidence to overturn an existing permit.
Well, he was looking at vested rights, invested rights is after a conditional use permit, so that he was trying to back his argument of the vested rights.
Argument was that they were relying on a cup that was illegally issued.
Right, so do you?
Which is exactly what you're trying to make the same case.
They don't have a cup, though. That's the point, is they, they're.
You're trying to say that they won't meet the cup because it was, and if, if one was issued at this point, that it would have been illegally issued.
They have not met it yet, and if one was issued, it would be the same situation of last time where people could be upset with the county for not following what our ordinance requirements are.
It's the same way. I don't, we're going to disagree and agree to disagree, we need to move on.
And I agree with Laura. You can't make two wrongs, two wrongs don't make it right, you know, what was approved incorrectly in the past does not make it right. But we can move on.
But, because really guarantee you can get the same judge the next time we're out? No, and we had a different judge that even ruled on the validity of that case. That was a different judge. And you may have a different opinion, so we listen to some common sense. I mean, you, you folks up there were elected partly, partly in reason, to keep more turbines from coming into our county. But I think that was part of the basis of having all new slate of board members other than Kurt Helmer. And now it's like you're, you're serving the developers instead of serving the citizens of Tamen County. You're giving them a pre-round. Why should I sit on a zoning board and try to make ordinances when you're going to sign an agreement that says they don't even have to look at the ordinance, they're just going to breeze on through and do whatever they want? That makes my job kind of futile, doesn't it? Are we that hard up as a county financially that we're going to do anything to get another one point two million dollars, is that, is that what it boils down to? No, I don't think so, I think that what we're trying to do is use the rationale that was already established within the last case to try to make the best possible case moving forward. Well, you know, as a farmer, there's a lot of things you've got to keep on trying at. You don't succeed the first time you try again, you don't say, well, hell, if we're going to give up. Yep. I would encourage you to keep on trying. It's less about any kind of a security that we could, any kind of financial benefit that the county could obtain by entering into such an agreement, thus it would have avoided in legal, which I think would be unsuccessful in the winter, but it would be done. That's just my opinion, but everybody has their. And you have four other board members, I encourage a little more board members to have a different opinion. Thank you.
And again, Doug spoke to vested rights of people, the citizens of this Tamen County versus a few people, a very few, that are going to be leaving as soon as they're done, which will probably be about a year and a half. Few weeks ago, Marshall Livingston came down here and had the courage to stand up there and talk about these companies that are liars. Well, we don't know what's going on and why we do business with them, and we don't know what's going on out in those fields when nobody can go out and investigate or inspect anything. And we get warnings to not go out on those job sites, nobody, not even the sheriff's department. So, we don't know what they're going to do, again, to money. So, do they pay for that E forty-three Duponda bridge, do they pay for that? To redo that bridge so that they can drive on it? And what about the gravel roads as they're tearing? And what about the gravel roads that they're tearing up everywhere? And the dust control? Are they gonna pay for the dust control? Are they paying for any of these extra things that they cause? And did they last time when they did the Vienna project? And Dr. Byrnes' project is not the same as this twenty-seven, that are going to be taller and fewer. They've already changed that because they're going to make, they're gonna put up less turbines, and they're going to go taller, and they have said that. So already they're, already they're out of code. They're not even telling us what they're going to do, or where they're gonna put them. I've already been told, and I'm not gonna say who, that they're moving them already, moving them. Of course, we won't know that because there's no inspectors that can go out there, no investigation at all, until they're gone from, and it's too late because of their invested rights. We, we don't get any invested rights, just they do. So I sure do appreciate the people that have worked so hard to try and keep this county protected. But boy, I'll tell you, we're losing everything. We're losing our county. And I, I can understand why Satan is attacking this county, all, all corners of this county, including right here at our courthouse. I understand why he's here. Why wouldn't he be? Thank you.
We have these public hearings and, and our comments. And I know the supervisors gotta try and give account on how many are pro, how many are against, uh, an issue. Well, with this turbine, this turbine project, I think a lot of the people that are against it have signed a touch agreement with the contractor. And they know that if they would come to a public hearing and say they don't want to be a neighbor to one of the ORAN owner, and the now, they will be subject to loss. So I don't see how you can really compare pro and against on the number of people that show up, since so many people that are against it and such, have signed a hush contract. They can't speak for or against. They can speak for, but they can't speak.
Because they took money.
Because, yeah, because, so, because they could be in a lawsuit with the contractor. Does that make sense at all?
Yeah.
One more thing, Mark. I would encourage you to, you've got one public hearing set up to nine thirty in the morning, is that correct?
Yep.
I would encourage you to set one up in the evening so the working people can have a chance to say the same.
I think we put it on the agenda.
I've already reserved a room. We've got to prove it in the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, September eleventh.
I have a question. Do you have any idea of the name or model that's going up?
I have some idea, because they put ten models in the cup application. They put, I believe it was a five or six.
They listed eight, but with an asterisk that said they could pick any other model they wanted to. So really, it's an infinite number of models. And if you allow them to go through with that, they could put any model they want on their application, and it would comply with their cup. I strongly suggest you have them pick one. That's, because that is what the ordinance says, they need to pick one.
That's my argument. They buy the big beautiful bill, they'd have to start building by July. And if it's, uh, July that they gotta build by, how do they not know? There's been prior build schedules that it's one to two years out. You have to have it locked in because they usually come from a long ways away, or they need to know exactly which ones they're securing. I think they should know when we're ten months away from the deadline of starting building.
Which definitely, probably.
Uh, that's.
Or construction.
I don't know. That'd be the federal side. I don't know what their thought is of, is it just sticking their shovel in the ground and digging a hole? I, I don't know. I don't know how the federal side would do that.
I think that it was a government agency that's supposed to define that sometime in August, so it's gonna be.
You're saying July of this year?
Next year, twenty twenty-six, January twenty-six. I think they have to start building by to be grandfathered the best way.
Um, is it possible that you can answer my question about who's paying for the bridge and the road repair? Yeah, I know, forty-five thousand. And the dust control, can you guys answer that? Are they paying for all of that as we go along here for the next two years?
For, for the bridge that's replacing on Dupanda, um, the cost that, for that bridge is four hundred and twenty-five thousand.
One twenty-five?
Four hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Um, that money is coming from our county highway bridge program. We get money from the state for the bridges. Um, and then, the reason that we were replacing it had nothing to do with the wind turbines, even though it looks, the, the way you're looking at me, you don't believe me, but it, it, the bridge inspections, that was, it was illegal trucks. The, the weight limits was lowering on that bridge. And so, any bridge that was over eighty thousand pounds, you know, a forty-ton truck couldn't cross that. That's why we're replacing it. It, it had nothing to do with the wind turbines. But for the dust control, um, the detour route, last week I said, that's maybe where just miscommunication or not got through. So the detour route, we got, um, dust control on. But we did not get dust control from Dupanda to Ross Street because that was not part of the detour. I had tried to get, um, the person that we're gonna do the detour route last week, but they did not have enough material to do that. So then we had to reach out to a few other, you know, get another quote to get that sell. You know, get, get that portion, portion sell. And as soon as they could do it was this week. So I apologize. Love to have them, you know, do it. When they had done the north route, they did not. Um, that's, that's where we're at right now.
Well, Ben, for clarification.
Thank you.
Yep. The, the bridge that's being replaced, is that normally used by farmers to haul their, their product away and to other places?
Yeah, I mean.
At Dupanda, right, that's the main.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's the main dragon.
So when, the, the legal limit for most trucks is eighty thousand pounds. Uh, but I know the governors have in the past approved up to, I think, a hundred and twenty thousand in order for them to haul. Uh, that bridge would not be a safe place to travel. So that's probably what would enter the decision to fix that bridge, is it's going to be used by our farmers.
And I mean.
And, and.
I know the seed, um.
The seed.
Yeah, yeah. For David or Pioneer.
I just wanna make sure we, when we, when we discuss and argue about something, we need to deal with the facts. And having been in the trucking industry for twenty years, I'm well aware of what I can and can't take as a truck driver. I wouldn't drive. They wouldn't let me drive. Um, I'm a supervisor, yeah. So I wanna make sure we're clear. When we discuss things, we talk about the real facts, so. Thank you, Karen. I just wanna make sure we're clear.
I understand, but, um, why wasn't the dust control put on three weeks ago?
We just.
Three.
Four weeks ago. You knew this bridge was going out. I know. It's just a communication thing, and I get it.
Well, and it's gotten so dry, too, because I know the, on the project hearing, and I'm getting lots of calls because it's so dry, and they were having to reapply it every two to three weeks or something, like, because now, of course, the rain shut off.
I urge all four of you to drive east, just drive east. Go around that hole that everybody else has to go around and see what it's really like.
Tell them.
Yeah. I remember last week you said you commented about it also. Thank you, Kurt.
On the dust control, I did contact Ben last week. And it was an unintended consequence of having our posted detour in what everybody is going to use, I guess. That's what naturally happened. And so we're going to dust control that now. The other stuff is going to be, uh, dust controlled prior to anyhow. They just didn't have enough product. And so that's the situation that we're in. It was a plan that this would be, it wasn't a plan we're reacting to what is actually happening with the public and how it's going.
Mark, how many times have I been in here and said, that, I mean, this is not a secret. It's normal for people to take the most direct route going anywhere. I, I don't, I don't know how many times I've talked about this in here, this whole year. As, as a matter of fact, David even said that Ben's probably agreed to come in here because I'm gonna jump on the E forty-three bridge thing. So, yeah, okay, I've written up a few.
I don't think he's up great.
Hundred times.
So I do have Ben, the four-way, the all-ways are up, except for the one coming south. I mean, they're, they're all, there's seven up. One side's either taken down, they didn't have enough to put up. So thank you. Uh, and also that, um, the guardrail area over that bridge, they took care of all of that last week, so appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Too much work.
Back to the detour, just out of curiosity, is it normal that a gravel would be a detour? Or would it usually be twenty-nine or thirty, whatever, what do most people do when it's a county? Blacktop, it's like big truck traffic, you wouldn't want going gravel, but I just didn't know, like, I'm just playing the fifth. I don't know if it's normal for that.
Typically, when it's. Usually, it's just whatever gravel, you know, usually it's only one mile, you know, square or basically. We, we'd take it to two-eightieth, but that's a level B, and we don't want all that truck traffic going on that level B.
Yeah. How many miles is the gravel detour?
Probably, really, it'd be two.
Okay.
Be, because it'd be two-eightieth, there's two-seventieth, Connecticut.
Got it. So it's not, I didn't know how far it was. I've gone into it in that way. Okay.
Yeah, it's.
It's only two miles. It's not too bad. I didn't know if it was like.
Well, because there, one, the stretch from Dupanda to Sharp will show. It is, is paved, and it's another mile.
Yep.
West.
Got it.
So I wanna go on record that this will be going on next year as well, when sixty-three closes. And if they don't open it within a year, it'll be going on for the next two years. So I wanna go on record as warning everybody that this is not a one-time deal. And the level B is right up by the county homes. And I'll bet one point two million dollars that that has increased traffic on it right now. Because why wouldn't people take that to get over to sixty-three? Why wouldn't they? Which would be a cautionary thing when the combines and trucks and semis start going here very shortly. Beans are turning. Thank you.
Okay, so, in previous meetings, we talked about paving the roads in the airport south to the four lane. That's for two years from now, next year to start. Wouldn't it make more sense? In this hardly, there's only three people, there's three houses on that road that are inhabited. And there's no businesses, and there's very little traffic. Wouldn't it make more sense to transfer that money and cement, boss, road costs to one from the Dupanda to Frost Street? A lot more people live on that road. You've got the, you know, the county shed out that way. And, uh, there's a lot more traffic on that road than there is on this little airport road.
Well, the one, we wouldn't have to manage as much traffic on there.
I'm talking about paving, you know, in the future.
I don't, that was a joke. But we wouldn't have to manage the traffic around the project. If there's only three people that live on there, it makes more sense to pave it.
Okay, yeah, nobody's gonna use this, but, yeah. Okay, send the money to Facebook.
Write that down, Mike.
Something to think about, any.
No one made a joke that no one got.
I, yeah. I, I'm a little slow, but it can prove.
Well, they got it, it just took it.
Okay. So Jim, there, there's a lot of factors. If that's already been planned, they, there's a lot of money already into that. But was there gonna be a casino up there or something?
Not anymore.
Well, was there? Was that the original?
Yes, there was, ten years ago or so, yes.
I, I mean, that was originally, but that's not anymore.
Yeah, now it's gonna be one in Cedar Rapids, so, yeah.
How many more people use the road like Karen's house? Wouldn't you have to worry about dust control? You don't have to worry about dust control on the airport road because nobody uses it.
I know.
I said she does.
Yeah.
I know, she's for it.
I, I wanna respond to Jim. Uh, there's, I don't know, probably twelve people that live on K Avenue just going from Ross to Dupanda. It would be hugely expensive to buy up all that land because they just can't put pavement right there on the, on the existing road bench. They always have to buy all this land. It would be hugely, enormously expensive to pave that road. It would be a whole lot cheaper just to keep dust control on it until this nightmare is all over with, however many years it takes. And, um, we're gonna need money in the future to repair all the roads that were not planned in the Byrnes project, that are now just somehow being ushered in with the Byrnes project. I don't know how that happened, we're such an honest company. So, um, we're gonna need a whole lot more money to keep roads repaired without, um, buying up land from farmers that's like thirteen thousand dollars an acre. But I'm just, yeah, talk about broke. So I don't think we should pave anything in this area right now. Just try to keep going with the roads that are already there. Try to keep them maintained. Maybe pea gravel or something, pea, that blacktop pea rock or something like that for a while. I don't know. Wise budgeting decisions. We, we, you guys were elected because that wasn't being done. Because things were being snuck in, and the money was disappearing. And so now you guys are in charge, so you can make very financially fiscal decisions going into the future, starting right now, starting today. You guys are in charge of that. All five of you are in charge of that, plus zoning, plus V O A.
And decisions can always be changed. I know you did, you spent a lot of money on Toledo Airport Road, you know, your mapping and that. They were gonna pave our road on three hundred tenth street, Ross Street Road, all the way out to my house. That bef- probably in nineteen seventy, they started doing studies on it. And then they widened the road, so it's hard to maintain. Well, and they bought easements or whatever, the farmers all the way out, raised the grade, and they have still done nothing. They did go out to Dallas Lisa's house. Eric did test for that. And, uh, I mean, they made those, they were planning on that back in nineteen seventy. I remember the, you know, the towers along the road on the gravel. Nothing's happened to that. And I'm not asking you to either. I like it just fine, despite what my wife thinks.
And they want their spares to stay.
But, you know, things can be changed. Mr. Vist?
Yeah, Jim, for that brutal op, they, they had this claim, the former board. I think that we can call that unadvised. When you check office, job is to represent every member of Tampa County. I think the mood here has been at times, at least, that only ones that vote for you. Well, then, are you gonna return the tax that everyone didn't vote for you? No, I think you represent everyone. And that's the way it shouldn't be. There it goes. There it is. But, and then there is a word mandate through, well, I served seven, four-year consecutive terms, plus another twenty-five days. I think that trumps most mandates. That's all I got. Well, those are the comments? Need to discuss and approve in twenty-five, twenty-five regular minutes?
So look.
Also, if it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, question carries. I think we already did the engineer road report. We'll officially do it now.
We're digging ditch on three-hundred-seventh Street. Um, and we're doing some of that on two-hundred-seventh fifth as well. Uh, you'll get to have those finished up this week. Um, dust control, um, I guess what we were talking about. After that. Oh, let's see. That's between E forty-three, or Dupanda and K Avenue, so that should be done today. Yeah, I guess I already talked about those portion from C Avenue to T forty-seven on two-hundred-ninety Street. Uh, Salt Creek will be thanked for reimbursing us for that. Uh, we'll be doing some colors, some concrete colors, um, getting those, um, it's a little separated, um, just need to repen those to the penning is, you know, they separate, but when you put pins in, you kind of sync them together so they're matched up. So I'm doing that, a lot of people were there on thirty Street, um, there. Oh, Avenue, um, we're going to lower our string grass there, um, will be kind of a ongoing deal. When our excavator is down, so we'll be seeing if we can kind of do that project, we'll be at the fair dip this week. And then, I guess, we already talked about the Dupanda and that, the cost that, the cost of that project again was four hundred and twenty-five thousand. All those funds came from the county highway bridge program, so. Um, and the reason we replaced it was for just legal trucks because the weight limit is going down. It's twenty-three, like, you see those three trucks that are on, you know, a weight on the side, they had which one was twenty-three pounds, twenty-three pounds, and then it was like thirty, thirty-six. So, um, it was, they were going to continue to drop that down and rewind the, jump ahead of that to make sure we're legal on trucks. And for the ones that are, yeah, overweight as well for the governor's part, so.
So a question for you, if the bridge is not marked, it's okay for the maximum weight? If it's marked, it means that it's been degraded because of inspection?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Do we have a whole lot of bruise on the county budget?
We do have like, oh, I think over there, you can see all those red dots, uh, and some of some of them are just twenty-eight, forty, forty, so those are, uh, those would be those would be for legal trucks, but anything over, you know, the original inspection, those those were to let people know, right, they're the, you know, they're over the governor's proclamation circuit. Or the whole system overweight permits that people have, um, that allow for ninety, two thousand pounds.
Okay.
They cannot go across these trenches.
Okay, sir.
Thank you. Yep.
And those.
Yep.
Avenue project that you were doing down by the cemetery?
Yep.
Turner Cemetery?
Yep.
They were, I know the water company was doing something there too, there's two culverts that are still in the ditch there, I didn't know who says we're.
Part of it.
It's probably just a break up.
I know we did some, we replaced the culvert in the area. So whatever, just wanted to be a cleanup, so. Check out of that, so.
Good.
Thank you. Um, can you do, do a cost difference between doing this K Avenue? I know there's a lot of houses on it and intersections, by the time we do all that, it might just be just as easy to do the whole works.
Sure.
Start, stop, start, stop, start, stop, check into that, and then we'll have an idea for the public of what, that's the way to do that, isn't it?
Sure.
I would say if it's not that much more, let's just do the whole works.
Sure.
I have drove on it in this dust.
Okay.
Uh.
You call my desk.
Yeah, on this K Avenue over here, we'll put here, be north and Frost Street. The quarry road, two-hundred-ninetieth and T forty-seven. What is your plan there when they're done? They pumped the crap out of it and ruined that railroad.
Yeah.
With all the weight and the start to pump the highway and the mess curves.
Yeah.
And it all on, so just keep aware of that.
I know, I'm, when I'm getting some votes on them doing some patching work, like Minas or Aspro or somebody like that. And then send that to Salt Creek or to what though?
Yep, so I only went north a little ways, specifically to the end of where my line's at.
Yeah.
And I haven't been north of that, so you might want to check that out, see if off the highway. I just noticed it this weekend on the rubber. Um, thanks for the meeting with the quarry people on C Avenue or that two-hundred-ninetieth, it sounded like that went really well. I wasn't able to attend, but I followed, called up with the guy, and it sounds like they were, everybody was happy with the way that went, so thanks for doing that. And that's all I got. Was going to have to explain that pin and the culvert for everybody, did that already, so. I know what it is, but most people don't.
I like the visuals, it's good. Another thing is, uh, the V eighteen bridge, I know you've heard this before, but it's just super rough, people are about making their vehicles out, is there anything we can do? I know you're going to redo V eighteen, but that's not for what, is it next year or the year after? Twenty-eight, not till the end of it.
Right.
What can we do in the meantime to make it, I know it's not, that's Kurt's district, but I'll vouch for him since I got the comment.
It's rough, yeah. Um, we've been kind of straight patching it, so that, obviously that has worked very well. Um, I think I could I hate doing it, but paving over top of it, um, to, because then salt starts getting into the, the, the structure itself once you kind of do that. Um, but at the same time, obviously, it's an issue, so, um, I know what we have are, um, they're down there in E sixty-six. Looks like they're going to be trying to pave that, that end of this year. Um, and so when they're in, they're going to try to if they got a day or something like that, they can look up there, maybe get a quote for that for them. And try to get that correct. Taking care of.
Okay. Yep, that'd be good. And then you were mentioning the dust control and the, um, area for that detour. Could we, since we're not getting rain now, could we ask Salt Creek to start dust controlling not just the intersection and houses? Should they be, could we ask them to do the whole thing, the whole like haul routes? Because once we, when it rain, it's not that big of a deal with that many trucks, it just gets dangerous and I just worry that something's going to happen.
Yeah. I know our road use agreement, I think it's intersectional to houses.
Yep. Um. They see what their thought is, I know they, they say safety is number one priority, then it's, it's just getting bad out there.
You know, the ones they don't do, just control, they would need it, you know, I know for a while there for hills and stuff, they've watered those hills, you know.
Yep.
And I hope they continue to do that.
Yeah, whatever they can do there, pin watering and dust control.
I did one more thing. Um, I got hit a church yesterday, no, Sunday. Uh, we're at V eight, is it E sixty-six and well, that goes up to V eighteen, I don't know the part of the V eighteen, that intersection there at Chelsea.
Yeah.
Um, there was complaints about the vegetation was such that you had to almost pull over the road see that there was on, on traffic. I think it's been cut, but the question was, who's responsible for it? I said, I don't know, we're responsible for it, the farmer or you know, C or DOT, so.
The B, are you talking about V eighteen and E sixty-six?
I think that's what that is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Oh, that would be.
Yeah, that down here.
That would be.
That'd be us.
That'd be us.
Okay. I just, basically I told, I told, call your office and it works too. Uh, or us, down that you would agree to rent, so. But it's been done, so.
Okay.
That's just my question, thank you, Derek. Thank you.
Before Bentley, when is V eighteen scheduled to have to load?
It'd be two twenty-eight.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's on my plan, yeah.
Year twenty-twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Really good.
Yeah, I, I, I saw it. And I guess for, um, an update on this, um, for the three-hundred-street bridge there by Lito, uh, over Deer Creek. So when they did the, um, agreement, um, they didn't, usually they specify in there what any overages, what, what that money's going to allow. Uh, so the one point five is from the city bridge grant is what we're getting, but what should, any money over that, the county will be using our highway bridge program funds for that, so. And then the city will reimburse us half of that. So this, this agreement is just pretty much saying that whatever is over the one point five, that the county will be paying with highway bridge program funds that access, so. The previous agreement that, um, we had signed, or I guess the previous board had signed, did not have that in there where that additional money was going to come from, and so for the DOTs, they need to have specifically where that money's coming from, and that's in this right here. Yeah, definitely they, they have that in there. Their agreements usually.
So what this is saying, that's going to be three hundred thousand dollars to us, and the city's going to pay a hundred and fifty thousand, right?
Great.
We'll make it one in through. I'll make one through that funding agreement, Green Street Bridge replacement. Number P R O S dash seven six nine two, parentheses, six oh five dash dash five, F dash eight six.
I'll second it.
Authorize this to sign.
And authorize you to sign in the end.
Yeah.
Dave's got that for us.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I second what he finished up. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Motion carries.
Well, the next thing on the agenda is something I placed on there already, so you noticed that there are another opening settlement that we've been signing up for. It's for Purdue Pharma. And if you guys approve it, it'd be a digital signature, though, I would do for Mark on.
Different than the ones that we had already said?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it the same, is it a same concept?
Same concept, yep. Yes.
Yeah, they would need lotion.
I mean, I know Brett sent the last ones, he finds this one too, or, I mean, I don't think there's any.
I used to help you, I guess.
Sorry, reason we need to, or is it just?
That we're going to be part of the, uh, sorry, now there's lawsuits going on with Purdue Pharma. Same thing that they've done with other companies that were dispensing opioids, which they feel like was um, was, uh, damaging, I guess, and so there's damages now there. Purdue Pharma is looking to enter into a settlement agreement rather than going forward. But the people who have all signed up to be recipients of those dollars, who are also the the complainants in the, in the lawsuits would also have to sign off saying that we would enter into those negotiations, it's this, it's the same thing that we've done with the other department.
Rather than being eventually involved.
It's all, yeah, knowing, it's all been through the, uh, through our attorney general.
Right. So that one, the other one would be hardest.
Yeah, one of the things that was happening with the other smaller ones, um, that dropped off, we weren't getting back to them in time, and so losing the ability to figure.
Right.
Because we weren't meeting the digits.
Okay. I'll make the motion then.
I'll second it. Second it in the discussion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Question carries.
I placed the other, this next thing on your agenda also is for a temporary liquor license for your private bartender LLC. Um, they're playing on Duskin's Music Festival, it's going to be called Underground Ranch Campfire, it's twenty-fourth of July, and it's in Little Chelsea. And that is going to be done September nineteenth, twenty-first, but they announced they're being out of all, yeah.
I'll make most of the improvement. Ben move?
I'll second.
And second discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next thing is discussion, discussion and possible action review, K County Courthouse Law and Policy and Application. I just received this from, uh, I looked at it, I guess, for the first time last week, and some questions as to why I came about and then thing that we need to have it, one of the things that was missing out of the original one was a number of people, uh, how many people are constitute, I guess, needing permission to use the courthouse law, which is a public place. And so any number that we put in there would kind of be arbitrary, but it'd be something that we would think reasonable. One of the thing, we, we have one, uh, on the agenda to approve for today that they said there's, there might be ten people there. Um, I have eight children, and so if I have my wife and I and we go to the courthouse lawn, do I need an application to rent that space? It just doesn't seem like that's a reasonable, um, reasonable request and other things, how many days in advance, uh, they'll have to be applied for or approved, those kind of things, and so I think that, um, there's a, a need to clean up the policy, I, I had done some other um, revisions to, just to propose and then changed it on the application. And so without it going through an attorney, I'd rather extend it over for some legal, uh, clarification, uh, and, and, uh, I think there's even more left out, as I was doing more research on it, um, is this, I think that we should go to a calendar situation where if people want on the calendar, um, to reserve a specific part of it, then it would go through the auditor's office. Um, and go that way, and then they would sign off, e- essentially on a memorandum of understanding of what needs to take place, there would be this meeting that's in the ordinance, as that happened, we've not met with the people who have put in the application, there, there's supposed to be some kind of a revision to this festival, I believe it looks like, and, and, uh, we'll speak more to the next items. Um, any that there's somebody, ten people showing up, they want to reserve it, I think that that's fine, we should put, yeah, we should put it on the calendar and kind of address it going that way, we don't have one right now, but we probably won't take any action on it, unless somebody wants to take action on it, but we should refer to an attorney. Um, I think that, uh, we could use Grant or we. we could use Grant, or we could ask um the first pool if they're willing to. Some some policy stuff for us in the past through you, from that standpoint, so.
They've probably seen other counties as too, being they represent ICAP and Heartland and all sorts of. So I can run it by them, just to get their feedback, make sure we don't say something incorrectly to violate, you know, constitution or something like that, so.
Yep.
Yep.
I'll ready it like to go there. Uh, just to screw them, you know, and we would, we could take a motion to, or for a couple.
Yep, I'll make the motion, and I'll run it by the Heartland Board's Call.
I'll second the move to the second it. Will they also take into consideration the other one that I said?
The draft, yeah, I'll run, you mean like the the draft and the old one and?
Yeah.
What their ideas would be to?
Right, there's, there's another one that I uh set out, uh, together that is from the state of Iowa, because there's a lot of grounds there, and there's maps and uh, there's, there's a lot that's missing from ours, essentially. And that one's a little bit more detailed, so I think that if we get with the memorandum of understanding, that system probably works the best, they have the calendar, which I think we.
Yep, we'll send all, all three versions.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Most carries. Uh, next item on the agenda, discussion of possible action on courthouse law and application submitted to the state of Tampa, Bible Bible Paradise Lost Reading Marathon. That found out that this is kind of weird, this policy had come from last year, was it last year? Sorry, Ben here. When, when uh, this had come up, there's a policy that was drafted, I just feel like there's a lot of things that were left out, but once again, does this qualify for a need, do we have a need to have the application in this circumstance, there is insurance that was required through the policy, a deposit, that they made the deposit.
I haven't made the deposit yet, but they've sent me their proof of insurance.
Proven insurance is there in the, we have had the the uh, within the policy, current policy, there needs to be a meeting between, it just says the county, the county representative and them, and so I think we can approve it at this time, uh, due to the other things not being that. This, the event isn't scaled to take place until September fourteen. Um, they are, are they asking for a man's stand?
Yeah, yeah, and I agree, when you approved it or whatever, I would let them know there's an instruction.
Probably need also, there what?
I would let them know at that point whether if you approve it, that there's going to be construction.
Yep, they're going to start construction on the man's stand on the uh, September eighth, uh, week from yesterday, and so as long as it wasn't big to interfere with that too, so we just need some more clarification, and it can go back on the agenda for next week, if we feel like we need to.
Do the deposit, because he has to, probably like the deposit if it was a check or cash.
Do we, is it something that we, do we need, do we feel like we need to approve a permit for ten people here? You know, showing up on the lawn to do a book reading of Paradise Lost? Or any?
But I, I was fine with the calendar idea, I mean, unless we're talking, I think you had said, what, fifty people, like, like for the Friday night on Farmer's Market, that's you know, that's one thing, but for ten people. Me, it's a calendar there.
Yep. I think we've, we've been having some people go uh at doing the Bible study, and there was one last year where they did, there was no permit that they acquired, I don't know that that it needs to be, if it needs to be, we can put it back on the agenda, but we can communicate with them that their event is fine, uh, but we don't feel like there's a need that there is a permit. Require.
So they'll just work with Karen, they'll have a quick meeting and pay the amount, and that'll be all that they need.
They won't need to pay the amount?
They're somewhere to move the amount to.
I just don't think it qualifies for any.
Yeah, and I'm okay with that, I just didn't know, for the ordinance, are we saying there's an exception, that we're just going to grant an exception, like to it until we get it updated?
Yep. We have to, we have to apply the same standard across every year. There's, if there's a Bible study that shows up there, we're not asked to for them to file papers for insurance and for deposit and and letting us know, unless they just really want to reserve a specific section. Um, we want to make sure that construction is not going to be.
I agree.
Rehibited either. If they wouldn't interfere with that, I think that it's good that we're trying to be consistent across the board, and so if we're not requiring churches to have this, more than ten people, um, that this group would be there.
Do we not require that today from other groups? I thought last year when this was approved, it's for everybody.
So far, we have, yeah.
So the Bible studies and stuff are paid today, yeah.
There's people that are.
As I said, those are the ones that we knew about.
True.
There's, this, it's up to them to bring it to our attention if that's actually happening, but I know that there's a Bible study that's we're not requiring but to file papers for any kind of a deposit or any kind of insurance in. Um, and so just to keep everything um, equal as we are moving forward towards a new policy. I think that that it uh, it would be kind of up to them, if they really feel like they need to, that's uh, just satisfy requirements, make sure that they have it in. Um, then that, that's one thing, but the other, I think that we're going to try to apply the same policy to this.
So basically, what you're saying is fifty or more, we go down the path, so if the lawyers say that that's a good number, yeah, then we would require them to do something provide insurance like the Easter egg roll or whatever else that's been out there for enlarged numbers.
Yeah.
The Friday market.
Sorry, um, what if they don't know how many people are going to show up? I mean, if they plan for ten people and seventy-five show up, then is there a retroactive issue with not having insurance, um, I guess?
So language on the application, I think I put expected approximate number.
Okay, but you said you knew of groups that were actively not following the ordinance already, and that they weren't requiring them to? And that's why you think we should go for it and just?
Yeah, I, I, I found this out in a conversation that I had last.
Well, had we posted them, I mean, I know we posted in the newspaper, but is it posted anywhere like around the courthouse, so people would have known if they hadn't read newspapers, that that was a requirement, or were they actively?
The only posting around there is no backup.
No backup, your bets.
Yeah, I mean, the courthouse is a public area, I think we just need to update the ordinances, just make sure people know that they're free to use the space, and it's a nice area to sit and read or do whatever they need to do, and just restrict these big, or and, you know, if they, yeah, I, that's all we need to do. So we.
Sands was here, I don't think.
Permit for their, assume to have the little
being over there underneath the, the, the.
Yep.
Yeah. Multiple events.
Yep, okay. So ultimately, you'll just let them know they're good, and we're updating our ordinances to make it more inclusive, that anyone can use it, with small groups.
Mark, are you holding this to make it legal?
Yeah, yep, question in a second, so no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Appose, what's your carries? Discussion of amendments to the development agreement, Heather had sent some out last week from um, that she wanted to have included, it's been a while, so fairness, through the three-day weekend, and bring it in other places, but there's some other things that is there stuff that hasn't been talked about already, just in general, if public comments, or say anything, want to share it just like?
Yeah, I mean, I could just read through some of the different things, so yeah, I think we need a, Laura kind of alluded to the repowering side of it, it's kind of saying they're free forever to do what they want to do, and so I feel like we do need to make sure it exempts any repowering or, you know, future things that could be put in place. I agree with Laura, the zoning administrator, um, they should still have, they have the authority for Iowa Code three thirty-five point nine strictly to enforce county ordinance and state code, that settlement's kind of taking that away from her, it's giving us kind of power to do what we need to do to enforce, but not necessarily her, um, or her position, I should say. Um, let's see. I, I agree with the thought that people who sign an easement were under the impression ordinances would be followed, and I feel like there's things that I mentioned that are musts that are not being followed, so that puts the people that signed up knowing that this is what it would be, that could be different, um. I think Ben should review the road use agreement first, now if the board supervisors were not, I mean, the curbs know about roads, but I feel like he should review it, and we final approve it, just like we do today. I don't think we should bypass the secondary roads department on that, um. Let's see. I think that the board of adjustment should be the ones to review the cup, um, I'll kind of list a few different Iowa Code and Tama County codes, but I think this board should say the moratorium does not apply to this specific cup application on December twentieth. Any other future cups, you know, need to be under the new ordinance, but I do agree, they submitted it under the previous ordinance, so that's what they, they were trying to meet the twenty-ten ordinance. So I can see their side of it where they should go after the old ordinances, um, so kind of to back some of that. Uh, I know it's become wordy, but Iowa Code three thirty-five point one zero, board of adjustment review and remand. The board supervisors shall provide for the appointment of a board of adjustment, and in the regulations and restrictions adopted pursuant to the authority of this chapter shall provide that the said board of adjustment may, in appropriate cases and subject to appropriate conditions and safeguards, make special exceptions to the terms of the ordinances or regulations in harmony with its general purpose and intent in accordance with the general or specific rules therein contained, and provide that any property owner agreed by action of the board supervisors in the adoption of such such regulations and restrictions may petition the said board adjustment direct to modify regulations and restrictions, so that's kind of saying that we shall have a board of adjustment, they they would be the ones to make the changes. Three thirty-five, Iowa Code three thirty-five point one five, powers of the board of adjustment. There's three different items, number two is they, to hear and decide special exceptions to the terms of the ordinance of ordinance upon which such board is required to pass under such ordinance, so I feel like they should be the ones per three thirty-five point one five, hearing the conditional use permit and deciding if exceptions should be given, I know we could make changes at any point, and I feel like we're doing that going forward. If we're going to grandfather Salt Creek Wind to to follow the old ordinances, I feel like they should be able to meet those. And we shouldn't be making special exceptions and changing our ordinances. Now, that's kind of a, let's grandfather them, but let's change for us to take away the board adjustments, right, to approve it. Um, Tama County Ordinance, Article XXII, initial use permits. Uh, Section nineteen hundred, decision by board of adjustment. Nineteen hundred point one, the board of adjustment shall, again, it's shall, hear and decide all cases where an application has been filed with the administrative officer for any of the conditional uses which may be subject to protective restrictions, it's deemed necessary, so again, it's not a, you may, it's you must send it to the board adjustment. Um. Section of our still ordinance nineteen oh two, activities per, actually, no, let's take that one out, there's tons of wordy of trend, at least what's related to this. Let's go to section twenty-one oh three jurisdiction, the board shall have the following powers and authority. Twenty-one oh three point two, to grant a conditional use permit as detailed in Article XIX. Um, twenty-one oh three point four, to grant a variation in the following instances. Um, so the first one under that one is B. In the determination that a strict application of the terms of this ordinance relating to the construction or alteration of buildings or structures will impose upon the property owner unusual practical difficulties or particular hardship, such variations of the strict application of the term of this ordinance being in harmony with its general purpose and intent. But only when the board is satisfied that a granting of such variation will not merely serve as a convenience to the applicant, but will alleviate some demonstrable and unusual hardship or difficulty so great as to warrant a variation from the comprehensive plan as established by this ordinance, and at the same time, such violation will not seriously affect any adjoining property or the general welfare. This clause shall not allow the board adjustment to permit a non-permitted land use to permit any district without a rezoning of the land by the planning and zoning commission, or by the granting of a conditional use permit as detailed in Section XYX. Um, that was a pretty critical one, because you're not supposed to do it of the convenience of the applicant, and you're not supposed to hurt the adjoining property neighbors, and not knowing what size the turbine is going to be, there could be issues there for adjoining neighbors. Twenty-one oh three point five, the board adjustment shall have any other powers which are specifically granted to them in any section of this ordinance. Twenty-one oh three point six, in considering all appeals and all proposed exceptions or variances to this ordinance, the board shall, making any exception or deviation bring ordinance in a specific case first determined that it will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property or unreasonably increase the congestion in public streets, or increase the danger of fire, danger of the public safety, or unreasonably diminish or values within the surrounding area, or in any other respect, improve public health, safety, comfort, morals, or wealth of inhabitants of Tama County, so that one's huge, because we know there's a risk property values going down, there's going to be, you know, safety, comfort, um, potential health issues, so that's a big one. Twenty-one oh three point seven, nothing herein contained shall be construed to give or grant to the board to the board the power or authority to alter or change the zoning ordinance or district map, so. So I was quite a bit there, um, I'll go back to mine, so I already had mentioned uh, just for the record on this topic about the wax and metal requirements and the resolution. Uh, Salt Creek has said that they don't know what turbine they're going to use, which again is a must. They said sixty days before they build, they'll get it to us, that's, that's, in my mind, that's too late, right, they, they should know that now. Engineering certificate, all the studies are going to be related on um, those, those heights. Um, I'll come back to my list here, the settlement agreement. The whereas number four, the zoning commission was finishing the solar ordinance is the reason they didn't start on the wax, I don't want it to look like us or the zoning purposely didn't do the win, they had been working on the so industrial solar ordinance for one to one and a half years, and they were almost done, and they were this close, it made sense, and they were spending what, two times a month at least to go through the solar ordinance, so it's making it look like they just purposely weren't working on it by the whereas number four in the settlement agreement. Uh, they have started working on the wind ordinance since August twenty twenty-five. As far as I understand, I don't, I don't know back when Bob was zoning administrator, but I know with Laura, I don't believe Salt Creek Wind ever reached out like, hey, why is here not being scheduled, what's the status? Um, I would think an applicant of a larger project would want to be following up, I don't think they had been at least in writing, following up on why is this not happening, so they were kind of sitting in limbo, just like everybody else was, this moratorium doesn't apply, does it not apply, what's the situation? Um, for E, again, like Laura was kind of saying, I think they're saying they're meeting all the ordinances from sales intent and and not, because there's shouts that they're not meeting, so I don't like I don't like to say things that are not true. Um, and I, the county does not need county does not need to agree to fight with the wind company at our expense, kind of as Doug was mentioning. Um, we would just deplete our funds again, it makes, you know, there may be different board members that come in as supervisors, and there may be things that come up that weren't thought about, there can be citizens that, you know, want to challenge, it seems crazy that we want to side with the the wind company that doesn't live here against a citizen if they had a legitimate issue that was affecting them or their property, I want to stand with people of Tama County. Um, depending on the situation, right, there can be some people that throw out crazy lawsuits, but for the most part, put something that's real legitimate, um. Say number three, there are four items that need to be met to get one point two million. To me, that seems like it could take a long time to get that, there's no final timeline, like it just says, well, all on that, I don't even know when we would get that, right, so that seems, um, that seems crazy, and to me, one point two million is not enough money, this, this project has no vested rights, because it's not an approved, anything spent prior. It's not vested, the vested rights doctrine is you have to actually get a cup, spend the money relying on a permit, and the ordinances get changed after that. So if we say, let's go with what prior ordinances are, since that's what was in place when they. So if we say, let's go with what prior ordinances are, since that's what was in place when they submitted it. Send it to the Board of Adjustment, let them have a hearing. If they grant it, they grant it and moves forward. If they, you know, grant it with variances, that's what they do. If they deny it, then we can still decide, do we. Leave it laying denied? Do we see what lawsuits come out? We could still do a settlement at that point. I don't feel like. I personally don't think we have to do a settlement before. I think we can say, hey, Board of Adjustment. The code says to meet, go ahead and meet. We're gonna say that you guys meet, discuss it. The moratorium. Doesn't apply to it. So I think that's a good way to lose a lawsuit is to say, you know, we changed the moratorium right after you submitted your comments. They're gonna use that as it was arbitrary and it's gonna look bad on us. J is after completion of a project, they will request ADLS. I thought we were gonna get that in place with them where they would try to request that now. And get it when they build. I know that phase one, we weren't able to get ADLS, but I know it's, it's not guaranteed. It's based on FAA. So maybe the FAA will say, no, it's gonna have to be a later thing, but. And this is, the contract says they get it after construction. I was hoping we could try to get it before possible. Okay. Salt Creek needs to know what the. Is now, so the county's not following ordinances by waiting until sixty days before they build. Required that the conditional use permit application. They need to be ready to build at the cup while otherwise they're rushing the request and they should not be submitting it right now. Um, and they, again, they don't appear to be meeting our ordinances in the resolution. Um, and I'd like to be away to adhere it, decommissioning. Uh, it says the county. May request a bond. I would think it needs to say obviously that the county. Will cause a bond. I think we don't want any open door items. So let's make sure that decommissioning says that we will acquire it. I want to see the. Value. I mean, I. In there, but it's to be, it's better than nothing, but. Um, resolution, I thought we. Budget of the settlement to be for itself, so I. That not be there. Those don't seem to help the county. Um, same things I said in the whereas above, we're saying that they're meeting all the ordinances and such. The vested rights topic, again, you have vested rights till after help is approved. I mean, you guys can go, go on Google vested rights. It's after you've relied upon a permit and then change the ordinances. So that's why we. Were losing in, in, in that judge's eyes on the other case was because they relied upon that five years and. Yep. Oh, let's see. Anything else? Yeah, listed most everything else. So that's kind of where I'm at. I. I honestly, I, I mean, I think we need to get, put the best settlement in place, but. I'm, I'm gonna vote no on it because I won't. Trust then to have a hearing. And I feel like we can still. Review a settlement after they make their decision. I really hope you guys can. So the Iowa code and our ordinance says they need to meet on it. Or supervisors, we're not the ones that should be doing it. Obviously, I know a little bit about it, but I don't think we should be making a decision. We were elected. We may, may not be the best people, like, wouldn't want me to deciding all the. That's not my expertise. I could listen to people, but I think we should, those people already. On the request, they've been looking at it for months. I think we should. All the code, let them meet on it and we're still in the same place. And maybe I, I guess that's just kind of my, my thought. Let them be good and they're fully capable. People can say what they want, but Board of Adjustment is. People. They're not just one sided where they're gonna just say no, they don't want. They, my opinion, they're a lot like me. Actually, they're gonna look at notices and just like the zoning, you know, does a good job on that too. I think research is where it's actually really. Research, but yeah, I, I appreciate David and Mark meeting on it. I think it's to have. Up option, but I feel like we have a pretty big. We're gonna sell out the county and only seven more combines. Fifteen hundred foot is where the turbines are not moving in the turbine's way. Our employees, fail in our life, if there was any future development that was needed. They should be able to. So, so. I know that was long-winded and I spent my Labor Day because of the vacation last week, but. I thought it was, since you put it on, I thought it was important to talk about it. I know we're gonna have these public forums. I do want to hear from people. I'll hear from any people that's a sign that, you know, maybe my opinion will change a little bit, right? But. I'm glad you guys are gonna look at doing a, a night meeting too. I think that's good and. Everybody in the project area getting a letter at least gives everyone an opportunity to, to speak. Cause if everyone's like, yeah, we want it. Okay, but I guess we'll do it, you know? But I think getting this settlement is good as we can get with these changes I mentioned. It's good, but I really. We're just going first, let them get a hearing in and we can still settle that. Unless they're telling you that there's a certain timeline, I feel like we could still have a hearing and either. Stay in the water or reset all that. And I saved it, so I can, I can send it, I can send it. Which one? Yep, oh, I can send, I can email you guys. I saved it at home. It just, just has, you know, I just went and found all different Iowa codes and. Our ordinances and just copied, copied and pasted everything. So I'll send that to you guys for FYI, so you.
You have potential loss. By going down the path, we, we're going way down, but we are getting. Do ordinance that are not any ordinance. We're making progress there. Regarding vested rights, I'm gonna do a deep dive into vested rights. I just did a quick look. I, I didn't see anything that talked about cuffs. I just, I saw a lot of different case laws out there about the expenditure of funds. The, the stuff that people have done to get to a certain point. Could lead to vested rights. So, again, uh, I, I can go back. I'll go home. So you what you just read out there, because I didn't comprehend the part in there. No, I, I, and that's not a knock. I've just.
It's a lot, yeah.
It's, it's a lot of information.
And I hadn't pulled it up myself, so that's why I wanted to see what does the code say? What does our ordinance actually say?
So, and the other factor in these board of this piece. We, when I say we, our predecessor judge said the ordinance, that the model number. And then the engineer certificate has to be upfront. I believe, if I'm wrong. That puts us in the position where we have a, have a. Requirement that is. Vulnerous. To that person's ability or that company's ability to apply for. Because for example, just, for example, we're going to go down the path of buying new phones. Right? And I'm gonna talk about our, and I'm talking about our iPhones and our. That other evil phone system that people use. I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that as a public meeting. Um, but we're gonna buy iPhones. Well, we're making them say we're gonna buy sevens when they finally get the contract. Seventeens are out on the floor. Whatever, I think like that, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. So a year from now. Just, I just heard somebody say, if you think Apple. Is not working on a phone that's gonna come out. Five years from now, they're actually testing, I say as we, as we speak. Because Apple has a stronger ethical desire to provide people what they need, not what they want. That's the same thing with the turbines. I mean, we, we found out in our negotiations. That the turbines, those nasals that they put up on top of the pole, they're all built in America. And everybody's going out and saying they're all built in China. China's gonna take over. We've got to be careful. And, and the other thing too is if they tell us right now what they're gonna put in place, guess what happens to the nasals? Price goes up. So that's, that's detrimental to the wind company. Providing certain information until the last minute so they can negotiate and buy the stuff before. Oh, hey, you need twenty seven of them? Yeah, well, we're gonna raise the price of five hundred thousand dollars each. That, that, that's. I think that's the rationale behind this. So. Those are the kinds of things that I'm looking at. Do I like wind? No. And I just happen to go back and look at what I said to the paper. Uh, when, when we were talking about the things that, because the question was asked about wind, I said. Something to the effect. It's, these things are going to happen. The question is how do they affect our county and how do we go down that path of people? So an outright no, an outright yes. Are not in my favor. I want to look at the impact, but going back to. If they sue. Everything we've negotiated is away. If they win. We don't get anything. We pay them the lawyer fees and they just play their whatever they want. So. I, I think we have to be very careful. When we come down on, we need to come down both sides of this argument and get the best thing for our county.
Then one thing on the spend everything that we did, we gotta remember phase one, we let come through. So we're gonna start making. We'll get, we got six hundred thousand. We're gonna get another six hundred thousand by the end of next year. Um, then after that, we'll start getting three hundred thousand. Six, like. You say like, we'll end up spending all, we, we already approved phase one. We already are gonna be getting. Money from the wind turbines on phase one, which is, and then Vienna will be paid off to around twenty thirty one, I think it is. Yeah, so we, there is, we will get this, the money back as long as, which my understanding is subsidies are grandfathered for. Projects that are already built before, you know, they have to start by next year. So clearly phase one, we will get that money back. So again, I. I, I don't know that we're just gonna use all the money and several lawyers have said it's not gonna cost much and we have a pretty good case here. Just to throw that out there. But do you guys feel like the Board of Adjustment, why not let them do their job? It's, that's how the code reads, Iowa code, our ordinance. Why would we not let them do their job? And then they can present more facts that we might be like, oh, I didn't even think about that. That's a good idea. We should put that and then. We can always decide whether it, you know, if it gets approved, it's approved. And I mean, if it doesn't, then we can go back to the table of, do we. Continue to try to make the settlement. Better, or do we, you know what I mean? Just trying to understand what's your guys' hesitation on letting the meet, do their job?
I, I think if I, where in my concerns, it's a scale issue. Normally, the Board of Adjustment is approving this small. Facility over here. We're talking a major portion of our county. And I, I'm not saying that I don't think they will make smart decisions. Concern is, what happens if they are specifically sued?
Yeah, so I, I guess if the, if the wind come near any company, if they're meeting our ordinances, they should have no problem passing the Board of Adjustment, right? Which would mean they don't have no problem passing us, whether we're doing it, Board of Adjustment's doing it. If they do what they're supposed to do and they meet our ordinance, and if variances are granted by the Board of Adjustment, it comes back to us for. Well, that is a, I think a new thing that had come up, that if there's a variance on anything, a house, a business. We would be the final say because it's changing and saying, no, it's, they can't meet this, but let's do a variance or condition. We would be the final say of that, but the Board of Adjustment, um, I'm checking with the risk pool on that. I know. Supervisors personally or individually sued, and we are not liable. So I'm checking on the Board of Adjustment to. Find out if they are not by the risk pool insurance.
So. One of the comments though, going back to what you said about the more just. Is, is it all or nothing?
That's up to them. I mean, what the ordinance says.
My concern is, an all or nothing south of variance where, okay. You haven't provided this, but you said you will sixty days before you start. That would be a reasonable, reasonable conclusion.
Reasonable to who? To you or to, you know, it's not anywhere in the code, like, to is it reasonable to?
The, it's a reasonable thing. When you're, I don't know, you've built a lot of stuff, but there's a, there's things that come up. Where A, the product's not available, or because everybody's trying to meet certain criteria right now. There's a limited number of nasals out there, people who purchase. Why? Why tell a company? Today, what you're gonna need next year? If they can reserve it and buy it at a lower price. So basically our ordinance, I think ordinance. It has in it a poison pill. Because it doesn't make sense for a business to make a purchase or make a decision. This far out, goes back to the.
Why don't they wait then until they're ready? I mean, I know you said it takes time, but anybody else, we don't give special exceptions to someone that wants to do, I'm gonna do a business in. Two years. I'm gonna go to the Board of Adjustment tonight because I, I may do this size and I may put it here and we don't do that. You mean, when you do the FSA paperwork study, they can't, oh, I might put jeans there, but I might change that to this. I mean, it's just, I don't know. You need to know what you're gonna do and do it right. That's my, my take. I, this isn't about. Want wind or not. It's not even my district anymore. Um, it's about, what is the, the code say? And I, I had to give up on mine because. It was vested, you know, likely because it had been tied from since it was. This thing isn't approved. Like it's in the really early stages. I don't know if anybody's even had this where. Usually they do a moratorium, they change the ordinances and then they get sued because they're vested. This is different to where it's like, we could say. Follow what was put in place in two thousand ten. If they don't follow it. Then we can go about and their ordinances.
So the question, the next question that's been in my mind. How many people have already signed agreements with Salt Creek Two? If they have signed an agreement and the Board of Adjustment says no. Then they can appeal. That takes it out of our hands. It goes to a district court. Automatically.
Yep, they can go from either side.
The Board of Supervisors has no say at that point because it then goes straight to a district court. What happened last night and we ended up spending three hundred.
And it can happen either way, whether they approve it or deny it. You get people on either side of the fence. So it's, I agree, it's, it's a risk that. Can happen regardless.
Right. The point being, was we had a lawsuit that started out by a citizen that became a county issue. The county ended up spending over three hundred thousand dollars on it, which. That bothers them, that bothers me. And that was just for that injunction. If it went on, if, if, if they countersuit or we countersuit and it keeps, we keep going back and forth, it's going to cost a lot of money.
That was our lawsuit. The citizen ones usually did cost very much. I think they over two years, it was like eighty nine thousand.
But the citizen sued, we, we joined that suit. Right, because it looks good and they went through and it cost the county three hundred thousand dollars.
The last one was hard. So there were so many, it was, they were. Suing us every time we turned around. Like this one, it would be one situation potentially. I mean, it's less. There was just so many different angles that they were suing us on. Like this was approved, sue. This wasn't approved, sue. Like it was just. This wasn't approved, sue. Like, it was just, that's what costs money. When you're just constantly getting sued from every direction. So.
And, and, and this goes to, or I guarantee, they're going to talk to me individually, to curbs. More, to view the curve. That's an easy two hour time of a lawyer for each individual one of us. And then they sue the board of adjustment, each individual. Uh, it, it, it turns into a, what was that, the money pit house? You're basically throwing money into a big hole and everything that's negotiated is going on. So the, those, those are the things I'm wrestling with. I need to see what you, you spoke about today.
Yeah.
So I can, I can look through that.
Yep.
Just make some comments, I'm just taking some notes. The uh, question was reasonable to who? Uh, reasonable to a legal, a legal standard or reasonable, reasonable to a reasonable person? Would in this case probably be a judge. They get to determine what reasonable is. The judge in the last case said reasonable was what we had already done. Um, another thing that kind of plays into the place with that is that we've already entered into a settlement agreement with Salt Creek one and set a precedent that allows for the, the turbine model and make um, not to be included with the beginning of, or if sued at the, um, when they tendered their cup and their prepared patients. So there's a precedent already, there's a legal precedent already set by our county. And that wasn't the first one because I think that the same ordinance was in place whenever the other wind was. And I don't have any documentation. I'm just told that, that that was one of the requirements and they didn't have that upfront. And so there's precedent in our other two. Um, that would give a good legal basis and rationale to a reasonable person. That would say you would have to find contrary evidence to, to deny that uh, based off of that criteria. The second thing was the upfront money. Um, we're waiting for that ruling to come back so that we can have a backstop and say, you have to have construction started by this time. This is when we want the one point two million. It isn't when the project's done. It's when, um, the one point two million in payment in addition to taxes would happen on the erection of the first turbine.
For the new settlement is what you're saying?
Yep.
But did you see those other, they added a bunch of contingencies in there?
It was like the same thing we had with the one. It's basically, it's not certificate of completion, it's certificate of completion on our half. The type of issuance of all.
It's like timely issuance of all necessary permits, certificates, and approvals to construct the project, which would be, yeah, I guess, is that before they build anything that would all be done? Expiration of the limitations period for any challenges in any way related to approval and construction of project, including challenges to this agreement and all necessary permits, certificates, and approvals and the conclusions. So if a citizen would sue it, we wanna get money and go whenever that would be concluded, correct?
Right. So it would be in, in the, at this, at the erection of the first turbine. Because you can ask Eric, you know, for his legal opinion on when it is. That's what he told me, uh, when is all of that legal language that they put in there. He said on the direction of the first turbine, it, um, established use. And that's the same thing we did with it. We're trying to do everything the same as. Um, next, uh, going from twenty-seven to twenty-four turbines, um, that was a request that was made by constituents that they would use as, or as few turbines as possible. It was our understanding to do so, you have to have, um, it wasn't, it wasn't their idea to go from twenty-seven to twenty-four to have bigger turbines. To have fewer turbines to remove a couple from the project, it would require them to use bigger turbines, essentially. That was our request, not theirs. Uh, so the decommissioning plan, we tried to use the same language that we used with, for the last one. That's what we were asking for, if that is. I didn't know, so it's a good catch. Um, but they've agreed to the same language that the the other, in our, in our negotiations, they, they had, uh, agreed to the same language in the, in the decommissioning plan. That they already have. Outside of that, um, if it goes to the board of adjustment, it will end in a lawsuit. Um, our attorney was pretty certain of that. If it was granted, it would be, um, we will be sued by a, a constituent. If it's denied, we will be, we will be sued by the wind company. Having said that, if it's, um, something that is granted, doesn't matter what kind of immunity or, or policy insurance you have, which I don't believe it probably has it for the BOA, but just saying that they do have it for the BOA, they can still be individually sued. We're currently being individually sued as county board of supervisors who in enjoy more protections than were afforded, or at least the Supreme Court hasn't ever ruled on what protections are given to the board of adjustment. They only have quasi judicial authority. We have quasi judicial executive and legislative authority as the board of supervisors. Therefore, we have absolute immunity. We're still being sued individually because if you violate the rights of an individual or a company, you can individually be sued. Um, that's clear as day. Um, they have the right, whether it would be, um, successful or not, that's up to a judge to determine. There's a lot of factors that would go into that. As far as allowing the, the BOA, um, this is an opinion that was given to us. So it was a kind of a long-winded one, so I asked him to write it out. The attorney about, um, the BOA issuing or not issuing conditional use permits. His reply was a conditional use permit would be a zoning issue and therefore for the zoning board of adjustment. However, the question is whether a C WEX project should be regulated as zoning or under the general police powers of the county. Should the law make the C WEX project a conditional use permit? Or should it be permitted, a permitting process under the general police powers? The difference between zoning powers and general police powers is important to understand. A zoning ordinance regulates land usage by district, residential, industrial, commercial, et cetera. Zoning is concerned with where a use occurs as opposed to how it is done. A general police power ordinance regulates land uses regardless of the district where the use is located. A zoning ordinance says that a use is acceptable, but only in a certain area. A general police power ordinance regulates the manner or method of exercising that use. A land use ordinance can utilize both zoning and, and general police powers. The ordinance that says factories can only be built in industrial zones and cannot be in buildings taller than one hundred feet tall engages in both types of powers. The zoning portion of the, can only be built in, in industrial zones. The general police powers is, cannot be in buildings taller than a hundred feet tall. Conditional use permit is a good example of utilizing both types of government power. A conditional use permit allows certain uses in the particular locations with restrictions on the manner of use. A conditional use permit might allow multifamily housing on a particular property that has a particular zoning designation, as long as the zoning board of adjustment can craft conditions that are consistent with the zoning location. It is my belief that the C WEX projects are not well suited to zoning considerations. Instead, the restrictions that are placed on C WEX projects are mostly, almost exclusively, general police power prohibitions. No one's C WEX ordinance focuses on whether tur, wind turbines can go in commercial or residential zones. The ordinance focuses on general health, safety, and welfare of the community. That is a class of police power ordinance and should be subject to police power permitting. This conclusion leads me to my concerns about having a zoning board of adjustment as opposed to the board of supervisors making decisions related to C WEX projects. The zoning board of adjustment is designated to adjust zoning laws to maintain the districting format, uh, formed by the B O S. The B O S passes and designates zones for each parcel in the counties. The zoning board of administration determines if adjustments can be made to those requirements on a parcel by parcel basis. An example would be, could we have a multifamily residence in our one zone property without disturbing the intent of the zoning district? A C WEX project implicates countywide policy beyond the scope of adjusting zoning districts on a parcel by parcel basis. The project implicates one county erosion, two county infrastructure, three safety and well-being of the general public, and four property tax base. I see a countywide project as a policy issue as opposed to an individual parcel issue. These are iss, issues best decided by the board of supervisors as the policymaking entity of the county. With that said, your turn ordinance makes C WEX project a conditional use permit, or conditional use permit is considered by the zoning board of adjustment. However, the county is entitled to change their ordinance or take other official action that would alter the regulatory scheme. Essentially, if you boil that down, um, he's saying that while our policy currently, uh, says, the county ordinance says that the board of adjustment decides these, it's not a good policy. It's not a good ordinance because it does a couple of things. It, uh, one puts the, the board of adjustment in danger of being sued as individuals. The second thing that it does is goes against what ordinarily would be how, how we implement policy. Policy in vote, in zoning, uh, districts. That's what the board of adjustment would have the, the, um, oversight of. This is a countywide policy. It's not just a, admin, an administrative function of the board of adjustment to determine one specific parcel in one specific district. This is a, a bigger issue than that. Um, the police powers are granted to the board of supervisors and not the board of adjustment. And so there's a discrepancy there as to where our ordinance is and, and if it's a good ordinance or not. And we're already agreeing that it's not a good ordinance except for in some areas. So that's the, that was his, um, position on it. Like, I can, I can, uh, see both sides of that. I, I believe that it's, um, wise, I guess, to use counsel. And I'm not as studied up on this as somebody who had been in the fight for many years. But so far, where I'm coming down on, coming to a development agreement saves the county from entering into a court decision that's inevitably gonna be out of our hands, period. And so why, we have the ability to make the decision as the board of, board of supervisors, I, I think that we should. It also is neither wise, um, for example, if, if we have an issue that is this contentious and this important, why wouldn't the board of supervisors who is elected, and if I make the wrong decision, then you vote me out. If I have somebody on the board that's appointed that can just be there, um, no matter what their decision is, and if everybody in the county is unhappy with them, they're protected. You know what that's called? It's called a bureaucracy. That's not a conservative notion. Um, having the decisions made closest to the people that can change, the elect, the electors can change. Um, is I, I believe, in, just in my opinion, the best way to do business. If you have somebody who's appointed to a five-year term and they continually violate, um, what the interest of the public is from the public's perspective, it can't be changed. Um, and we could always use that as a shield and just say, well, the board of adjustment said that, but we, we disagree um, with what they're saying, even though we are agreeing. It's just a, it's fodder. It's, I, I think that it's reckless use of government on us. And if we're expecting the board of adjustment, who is very well uh, studied on the, on this issue, um, to make those decisions to be appointed for any period of time, not, uh, personally with any of the people that are on there right now, just in general. The idea of them having policy, making decisions this, this large of a magnitude with no recourse, I think that it's dangerous. So that's, that's why I'm sitting where I'm at.
Okay.
Comments on it?
Just a couple of poll ups on those. Um, the last settlement before we approved it, there's no legal basis for it. There's no court case, there's no precedent. Besides, our county specifically did that one thing. We get a vote on. Phase two, in my mind, is a completely different situation. Yes, have we done it before? But it was a different situation, as I continue to say. Um, board of adjustment, if they're doing the jobs they're appointed to do, I don't think they have anything to worry about. And I, I think they will do the right thing. If you're, if they're doing their legal job, I think it'll just, you can't just go after someone for personally because they did their job. If they're just, you know, stating facts and reasons, um, but that's something that, you know, they can consider. Uh, and honestly, it's too late. Like, if we take it over and we approve this, it's too late at that point, that part of the county, those people, they're gonna have to live with this for years and years and years. So I think our job is the safety and protection of people and the land, livestock, and I think we need to do that. I, I think you, you can't just oh, wrong, wrong thing and then put someone, vote someone else in later.
I think within the broader context, not only are we trying to protect the people who live in that area, we're trying to protect the rights, I guess, and the positions of the entire county. And I believe that there's been an overwhelming sentiment of people who are not willing to expend another dollar legally to defend this position. I've heard more of those and it's, and you say it's not about stopping turbines. Um, and there's been arguments that it's, uh, it, I think what it all boils down to is, are we willing to spend another dollar legally to defend the position that I believe has already been defeated? I just don't feel like that's a reasonable position to. It's not about, um, like, it's not about fighting wind turbines. It's about seeing if our laws are legally, or, or excuse me, being applied universally legally and those kind of things. I believe that that answer has already come out. That's why I stand on the side that I'm on. That's why I was on your side to begin, because I thought that they were. I thought we had a bad argument. I thought that it was a reasonable position. However, once you have the answer to your question, if you don't change your position, I think that you're the unreasonable person. But, um, not the, not the ones that are recognizing what the court has already decided and is likely to decide again. Board of adjustment can still be sued legally. Doesn't matter what, e, even if they're acting in their official capacity and have the best interest of the county in mind. If they vote away that may deny the right even of landing, or if they can be sued in um, or the right that the company says that they have to.
Yeah, I'll get that feedback from the risk pool. It's, I, I don't like to make assumptions when we don't have facts, so.
They can be sued. It's a matter of whether it's going to be.
Be covered or not. That's, no, whether it's covered or not by the risk pool. Because we're, we're covered. So I wanna see if they're covered. So ultimately, we'll have the two hearings. And you guys will continue to negotiate. And I guess, yeah, I don't know, at some point, we'll have to decide whether to prove or not approve, or maybe put on the same agenda to prove or not approve or send it to our adjustment. When we get to that point after the hearings or, because I worry, the more you sit in here talking that we could take this over. Are we gonna have a public hearing? Are we gonna make sure all the Rafterness studies are good? Are we gonna, are we gonna go through the whole thing like they're doing? Because that seems kind of wrong to the people that signed up and didn't sign up if we're not. And we're just saying, oh, they submitted a thousand pages and we're just gonna do this six-page settlement and hope it's okay. We'll figure it out later, you know?
Mischaracterization. Uh, or we're going, so we, we're now in this, we're professionals or they're professionals at Rafter Studies? Uh, proof that studies, I mean, I've heard all of them.
And the ordinance just says they can reach out to anybody they need to, to get the right people. You know, if they're not an expert in it, they.
They can't build the project without satisfying the requirements of the federal regulations. Not our county ordinances. That's not our county ordinance. We have no county ordinance against building wind turbines near Rafter, or near, uh, Eagle Nest or Fruit Pass. Those are all regulated by an agency much larger than what we are, that has specialty, you know, with scientists and all, all kinds of data. They have to have those before they can build. They're not going to. the federal government isn't going to give them the state government also isn't going to give their tax credits without satisfying all of the requirements that are laid out, which are much more stringent than ours are.
Sure thing. I'm just looking at our ordinances. There's just a lot of it is an old ordinance.
You're asking for us to implement a policy from the federal government's perspective. It's not our business to go in there and determine what our opinion on it. They have met those requirements or not. That's my own. When I ran, one of the things I wanted to do was to go through every ordinance individually and clean them up. We haven't been able to do that because of the lawsuits that are against us, because of the back and forth on whether or not this is a good thing, whether it's right. Is it should we go with lawsuit? I mean, we're spending more time. And granted, we need to spend the time, but we need to make a decision. And it's got to be the right decision for our county. But we've got ordinances out there that are care. We got rid of that one that got put in at the last minute last year. That that was a horrible ordinance. I I understand why it was done, just a wrong rationale, a wrong reason. And it stifled the ability of people to talk. And I mean, we we ran on transparency. We ran on doing the right thing, balancing the budget. And so as we go down this path, Mark's right. There are things that that companies have to do. They have to satisfy the state, the federal government. And if if the federal government, the state have signed off of those things, us going back in and trying to, I don't wanna call it litigate, but to go back in and see if they sloshed every T and dotted every I, that's not our business to do. I mean, our our business is to make a wise decision based on all the facts. And I think that's, you know, some of it has there's a risk involved. I mean, we could sit there and say no and then go to court and then find out what we've already said. Cox said it, the really good judge that was supposed to rule on our behalf said, nope, Cox was right. I mean, literally, our lawyer said, the one judge on the rotation that would probably fall back on what we want, didn't.
But he also said, once a judge makes a decision, they're not gonna overturn it. Just to jump in the spot and be like, no, I I disagree. Like, it's a Supreme Court where you have to go and that's where Worth County is going. They've only spent like two or $300,000. It's not as expensive when you have a cheaper lawyer like the risk pool lawyers. We were using the top dog lawyers, which is expensive. It's like, well, it might have been the Supreme Court, we don't know, but it was expensive and we were out of money. I had full faith Supreme Court, but we didn't have the money. Now we do have money and we'll get money. To me, it's not just.
From where? Wind company that sues us?
From phase one. You don't think we're gonna get, I mean, Mark put out there all their figures they're gonna give us, plus we're getting 1.2 million.
And the reason the reason we didn't get the money upfront was the wind company said, we're not gonna give you money to sue us. You just said that we were. Okay.
I'm just trying to protect the people. I I there's state ordinances, I care about the local people, you know, we know there's.
I do too, but we've got people who've signed contracts that if I had signed a contract that I was gonna get X number of dollars that I can't talk about because I'm an N D A, and you say no, I'm gonna sue.
What about the ones that want out? They might or two.
Yeah.
I care about all of them, whether they want them or they don't.
But they they signed the contract.
Yeah, that's based on if it gets approved by the county.
But they signed the contract. So anyway.
Okay.
We can beat this dead horse for a little time. I I won't see you again.
It's good conversation. We need to have these to where we can. They do.
Like I said, I'm not for wind, I'm not against wind. I just don't like the way they look.
Yeah.
But if it, I'll go back. If it has to be subsidized, I am really not for it. But I'm also not for spending the county's money and which involves the people. I'm not I'm not for spending money foolishly. And and I am not convinced, and we're going to go to the next quarter, I am not convinced.
Okay, fine, over there. Just thinking.
It's good discussion. I just I I don't want to be characterized as somebody who doesn't care about the county.
Right.
And the people of the county. If I am for not using the dollars legally to defend the position, I feel like I've already I've already made that case, I guess. There's no doubt that Heather cares about the people that she's trying to represent. There's also no doubt that if you're taking a contrary position, I also care about the people who have come to me and said, we've used too much county tax dollars to defend that position. It's gone before, we understand, move on, including some of our state representatives and senators that are absolute diehards on fighting against the corporate greed. They understand it. However, as a small county, they don't they understand the position we're also. And so we care about the electorate in general. And we have a different different competing interests that we're trying to protect. I know that Heather is very passionate about her people. I also am passionate about her people as well. I felt like we had a good, some good arguments until we didn't get anymore. And so I had to switch uh switch my position. I never try to mischaracterize Heather, she's not scared of her people. I appreciate that, that kind of projection on the mission picture. So far, I have not had anybody come to me and say, keep going with the lawsuit. It all been, no, stop it. One person.
From your district, you mean, or?
Public, I got.
Several people in this room have been.
Right. I I'm not excluding this group, and I know where this group stands.
Right.
I'm talking about being approached in public and being told, stop it.
Yep, the hearings will be good. Like I said, I I do want to hear from the people because that makes a big difference, you know? And so I think it's good that we hear from them and be thinking about every little thing we don't want to miss. So I'll send you guys out, that way you can mull over it. If you could send us your email too, they've read off. Yeah, it's gonna make it work.
I'll send it to. Karen, the numbers into that.
Can I ask for some clarification? I thought you'd just been talking about, so we, the supervisor signed a contract with South Creek One. Is that correct?
We we signed a settlement with South Creek.
Yeah, a settlement with the 1.2 included in it.
Correct.
Now, I was.
Jim, will you let us just do some housekeeping things first and then bring this up in public?
Yeah.
We're paying. We're almost there. We'll post a discussion on that, probably come back to it in public comments. Let's set the public forum. We had people that asked for us to do the evening meeting. Last week, we had talked about doing that. But I wanted to get something on the calendar before I left. I'll be gone for a week and so September 11th is.
Thursday.
A week from Thursday. We, David had reserved the bank.
Right, the state bank, the committee, the community room for the state bank, we're right over there.
Yeah. So I've got it reserved for the 11th. We just need to set a time. Six P M worker, we have it from.
I I have it, so I.
Like, I'll go up to anytime. So I mean, it could be earlier or later than that.
I told us we would, we would have it from four to ten, four to 10.
All day.
All day, basically.
We pick six gives people enough time to get home from work and maybe grab a bite to eat or eat after that. I don't eat like that. Very public comment, please.
Well.
Very public.
Time.
The time. What?
I was gonna say, a lot of people eat at five or 5:30, a lot of people do. So maybe 6:30 or 7:00 might be a little bit better. I'm just.
I don't want it to get too late.
I know.
Because it could go long. So I just thought if we start at six, they give people, you know, people get off work at four, 4:30, get something to eat, and they want to head right to the meeting, give us some opportunity.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking if it's they don't show up till 6:30, they're still probably having their voice heard. Because it's gonna go past 6:30. These meetings, we started at 8:30, it's almost 11. They'll all still be there if they can. That be agreeable?
Six, six o'clock.
Six o'clock, September 11th. As the state bank, community review room, we believe that it's bigger than this, so it'll hold more people. So.
I'll make that motion. It'll turn 6 P M on September 11th, state bank of Toledo Community Room. For it would be, what do you want to call it?
Oh, public forum.
Public, public forum before the South Creek win.
Yeah.
South Creek win to development agreement.
Yeah, good, but second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Supervisor based by district. Since Selmer's not here, but anybody have anything that they want to?
Bring up for a piece. Actually, we had the economic meeting with the folks up in Butler County, well, the folk, Butler County. Uh, it was really, it was simply I am being on, what do they get, billion dollars a a year funded by their industrial park?
Yeah, they they put their own industrial park in, ethanol plant, just took a rural area two miles out. They're gonna, in 10 years, when the tip district's down, they're gonna be bringing millions of dollars into their county. It's just amazing. He was full of knowledge. He was phenomenal guy to talk to, so. You guys need to get up, want to get up, like, he was, we could have spent all day there with him.
Would that been like, because a certified site, it means the technology.
They started developing it on their own, like, it's by a rail and they just started themselves a small building and kind of the the hookups and stuff, and then it just exploded.
They fixed trains there, they've got the, they got a lady who works for Mayo Clinic. Who's got a clinic there now and sent that in the travel up there. The the biggest issue why it went end up in Butler County was because they have railroad tracks and spurts. That's what we have in Tame.
I know.
Except for the Tame of the city is putting or doing a Halloween thing there. I don't know if that rail spurts going to continue to be active for the, where the paper plant was.
Yeah.
But.
We have the whole realm through Gutsy and.
Yeah, so. We've got options out there, but I I think Mark and I have thought about flying. We're gonna switch back, if that appropriate to say here? Yeah, he's he's gonna get back on economic, he's he's got other irons in the fire there.
You should definitely go meet with Jachter Havazin because he was.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the concept. We, it's it's because they have a certified site, it's through the I O Economic Development Association. You, the county, it's essentially if you build it, they will come. There's a lot of counties that are sitting there with certified sites and they put a lot of money into it. We're in nothing gains also, so you have to look at the other. You looked at the successful one, which is great, you know, to look at what they did, right? And so we we were just, I would just be cautious of.
Oh, yeah.
Of thinking if we built it, that they would come and help, help the village, you know? There are a lot of things that do make sense here that we do have to to make that happen. We we had done that at Bahaska, there's other counties that are sitting out there with certified sites that don't have any projects. And they sit there for 10 years.
And and the one thing that they that they were talking about, they had to bring in people from out of state. Could not, you could not compete with counties.
And they were really big into marketing or they would go find, like they said, really good team around them.
It's something to look at. I mean, you've got a tapping plant, I don't know, I see an awful lot of trucks. And from the trucking world, we used to hate trains, but, you know, almost all cereal goes by trains. It used to go by trucks, but because they go along the shelf line. I mean, there there's a whole bunch of reasons to consider this stuff.
Yeah.
But again, so Mark's, Mark's better at the economic world than I am. I'm gonna take back over, it's still a primary, the juvenile detention center. So that that ran into a problem for Mark, they wouldn't let him do some stuff because he was the alternate. So, okay, I'll go back.
Right. Back to the economic thing, I'll finish some of those items. So they also use this institute of decision making, I B N, that we're also talking to as well. They used them in the beginning several years ago, and then they used them when they switched to Butler and Grundy County together for that economic development through you and I. So, yeah, it's definitely, I'm glad that with them, I think it's gonna, they're gonna get us on the right path. They also, in Butler Grundy, they work with utility companies. I'd never thought it, like your Mid America, your Alliance, they have those people that help fund the economic development. They have a seat at the table, too. They use bankers, supervisors, business leaders for both that funding and decision making. So that's kind of a cool way to think of it, you know? And we also discussed that housing need assessments can be done. So David was gonna check on that with Marty with the Region Six, because they have a different, not a Region Six, but a different one that they use, but they've seen a lot of opportunities that they've leveraged them. And we plan to, our next step is have an economic development learning session presented by you and I Institute of Decision Making with county leaders, elected officials, interested parties sometime around early October, around that kind of six or seven. So let me know when you're available. And obviously, we'd make it open to, it'd be nice if if all of us want to go, because it's gonna be our district people, our movers and shakers. So we'll get an exact finalized date on that. But, yeah, that was a really good visit. I know we're short on time, but just real quick, there's a press release I've updated you guys on the workforce development board. And South Central, which is our workforce development, is combining with Mississippi Valley. Is the one that we're gonna combine with. So I had the full press release, I don't know if we have time to read it all, but otherwise, you guys can look that up. But it's gonna be 22 counties that are going to get together. It'll start next July, so for now, they'll just stay on their own and kind of get things cleaned up. But it'll have a new, a new name will be developed. They're kind of figuring out who wants to be the leaders. But it'll be kind of that Clinton, Des Moines County, Henry, Jackson, Lee, Louisa, Muscatine, Scott. And then our current areas, Apneus, Davis, Harden, Jefferson, Keokuk, Lucas, Mahaska, Marshall, Monroe, Tame, Powashie, Van Vernon, Wapalo, Wapalo, I should say, and Wayne. So it's kind of where we're at. It's it's gonna be a a good board. I won't read it all since we're running out of time, but but, yeah, that's gonna be combined together. Being in my district, you can see there's several erected turbines. If you go by, there's at least probably seven plus that have been erected. Quite a few bases, three of them, maybe more. So they're going up pretty quickly. Dust, as I mentioned earlier, is a big issue. So I've had also quite a few near miss accidents that I've heard about with the construction going on, stop signs not being stopped at. So I've addressed that with Ben and with the next area representative, but that's critical. We we don't need someone to lose their life over these kind of turbines. And this is where I hit that passion site, because I've had at least three people that almost got hit, you know? And so that scenario can happen with anything, I know, any kind of construction, but it's a large area. And so I'm just continuing to put it ahead, get dust control, put water down, you know? Any calls that I get or emails, I I pass that on. So Hardler Risk Pool, the Fall Seminar is September 11th. So you did need to sign up if you didn't already, I'm sure you could, it was due yesterday. But it's from 9:30 to 2:15 for, I believe it's home boys, right Karen? I would assume it's everybody or at least department heads. It's not just supervisors, I know. So make sure everybody's gotten that, I guess, if they would like to join. And then D C A, my J P T. So that one, we got a new D C A coordinator. Miss Quaki only spent 19 and a half percent of their budget, which was $1,100. So they are gonna get more this year, but they need to make sure that they're spending that money that they get. Other items done in the last year, child abuse prevention, Grinnell Regional Medical Center, D C A coordinator position, Jasper County Public Health, they did a parent engagement and education, family functional therapy through Fakerdale. C P P C did grid shock to high school students, passenger safety, movie nights, supper with heroes and fishing events, Healthy Kids Day, Y F C A, mental health advocacy and resource for schools. So I know our public health leverages that, C P P C items with the different Suppers with Heroes and the different movie nights and such. So and they have, the budget for J P T is 89,000 to spend in 2026. So so I know I had to long wind some of that, but I think that was, that's most of it, so.
On the mental health side. On the, uh, mental health side, uh, I met with Livy and, uh, Casey. Karen was in here, but we're making sure after we've switched over now that our reimbursements are coming through from the state. For mental health, for everything that they said that they were going to pay for under this new behavioral health district and, uh, so far, we have now. We had this meeting and then the next day we received their money and so that was good. Good timing, uh, Casey and I are going to visit, um, North Iowa, um, Regional Services, which is a crisis stabilization unit. For adults like, um, for people who are not needing to go to the E R. To get some clarification there as to what their criteria are for, uh, bringing people who are in crisis yet not needing, um, that level of care. To try to, um, divert several of our hospital, um, emergency room, which is very expensive and frustrating for the people who are going through the crisis to, just be told that. Their crisis doesn't meet the level of care that they need to be in the hospital, a lot of times it's days, uh, that they might sit there and if they do need a bed, it's still days. And so it's trying to come up with a different system and a different plan, so Casey and I are going to visit, uh, up there.
Where is that in?
Um, it's in, uh, Wyoming. Um, still hammering out the details of adding, um, a mental health liaison, law enforcement liaison, uh, what that's gonna look like. So that's essentially what we've been talking about with mental health, which I still had a meeting on, uh, Wednesday with the mental health board, uh, from before. Those won't be phased out for, at least until the end of this year, I said we still need to meet in. And, uh, there's still claims that are coming in under the old system, and so I'm still meeting there as well. We got a lot of dust on my road too, and I almost got into an accident because somebody was texting and driving, if you see, if you drove on my road, there's a lot of curves. And, uh, people who are coming around the curve, so also Ben was just controlling my, it would better be great.
What's the question, come on, was it?
Probably, who is it? Tell me your address. Anyhow, um, the Ju, Central Iowa Juvenile Detention, I've sat on that board for about three weeks, or three, three months, uh, seems like. And, uh, helped hammer out some details of a settlement that was going on for eighteen months or something like that. And, uh, kinda changed, helped to argue and change some trajectory of votes, how those things went. And so, uh, we're thankful for that, private solution, I think, uh, for our next board, uh, next forty meeting. Resolving that issue, and so, uh, after we pass that, then it'll go back to the full board to file, so. So then I'll look forward to going back to do some more economic developments because that was a little bit missed. Central Iowa Detention, I hope it gets, I think the meeting's gonna get better as we move forward. Good. All right, uh, discussing through claims and then we'll be back.
Uh, we have claims in the amount of three nine zero comma, one zero six period, one seven. Three hundred ninety thousand, one hundred and six dollars and seventeen cents. The biggest one was in our area, supervisor area, and that was, if my memory serves me correctly, we were moving. Money to general supplemental for two hundred fifty thousand.
Moving from general supplemental to nine one five.
Right.
That's your quarterly meeting for.
So that's what the big money was. I make a motion that we approve claims in, in amount of three ninety thousand, one hundred six dollars and seventeen cents.
Second, it's moved into segment, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A motion carries. Now Jim.
No problem.
I got, no, that's fine.
Thank you.
Aye. Fantastic.
You're good then?
I'm good, I'm good, yeah.
If we just do that every time, maybe the, maybe that feeling would pass.
Yeah, yeah, I did that.
Larry Viss.
Hey. Well, it must be as long as two years. Boss, for one bit, Espen Side. Probably did it, by the way, I think she was speaking for D C A, for T C A. Or does anybody know where that thing's at? We, me, myself and Kendall and Dan and Bill, we're all leaving.
Oh, the prior lawsuit, it was dropped, that lawsuit was dropped, uh. Last November or something like that, I think.
We haven't seen you for a while, Eric.
The one that you were on, yeah, it's been a while.
It's always, two guys, about, no, this is a drop, she wasn't about getting it. It's not, so talking about it. Thank you.
Go ahead, Karen.
Um, so to, to what, um, David said about the time that goes involved. He first came on board, he spent several months on just working on the financial matters and on the budget, and so. This was inevitable, and so, yeah, here we are working on this and, um, it does take a lot of time. I'm, I'm glad you're gonna give it a couple more meetings for public input. Um, I, the way these huge global companies work, uh, with, with their blackmail techniques, I, I, I realize that. They put out a lot of gag orders already and a lot of threats already, so yeah. When you say that individual born members may get sued, it, it, that's just the way that they operate. Not just Next Era or Salt Creek, but just across the, across the world, actually, it's the way they do business and it's how they keep plunging forward, so. We're setting a precedent here, it's full of risk. For our future of Tama County and probably counties surrounding us. It's, it's a risk that we have been fighting for four years now, and it, it is huge. I appreciate you guys diving into this, giving us time, more input, more people to come and talk if they want to. Um, I agree with what Heather said, that if we have extra meetings for information and everybody's content with. Twenty-seven more turbines going up, uh, near vicinity, then it's gonna be a go, there won't be any, uh, intention. I, I don't know about this county going under Supreme Court, but you know something? Um, let the public talk about that, let them know that's what might happen if we fight this. Let them know, and that way, if there are farmers, we talked about this three, two or three weeks ago. If there are farmers out there that wanna contribute hundreds of thousands of dollars to fight for the millions of dollars of land. Protect their huge vested rights that they have in maybe five generations of land, let them know and let them speak and let them offer. I think getting it out in the open now is finally important, and this is, somebody said this is the time, this is the time. It's, uh, by the end of this year, this is all gonna be a done deal one way or the other, uh, it'll be. It'll be established or it'll be. Everybody'll know where we stand, and there's a lot going on this year, it's an amazing thing, actually. Um, the fruition of this, even around the Escondide, um, lawsuit, it's, it's just huge. Thank you for all the time you guys put into this, I appreciate it, but if, after this is done, there'll be some other great big thing, I don't know what it'll be, there'll be some other great big thing. That's just, that's the sign of the times right now.
Aye.
Um, just to, uh, touch on a few things that came up in your discussion with the settlement, um. Every work, every county that I've read their ordinance that has the C W X ordinance, their process goes through Board of Adjustment. Everyone that I've read, and I've read a few, um, I just checked, Iowa Code three thirty-five does not have the term police in it at all, so I'm not sure. Where your lawyer sent that, and I would really love to know what we're gonna, or what Iowa Code that is, check that. And the only term, uh, where, the place where the term police is in, uh, Iowa Code three thirty-one is referring to police chief context. So I'm not sure where that shift of allowing board supervisors to have that in legal code, I, I don't have any reference to that anywhere else. Um, like.
It doesn't have to be executive.
But that's, that's not spelled out any.
It's a function of executives.
Right, but it is spelled out, the conditional use process is, is for uses. On land that it's not zoned for, which would go through Board of Adjustment, and every county that has. A C W X ordinance has it go through the Board of Adjustment, conditional use process. Um, and if you guys decide to go outside the ordinance to do that executive use. I would say if, if they want you to go outside the conditional use process for that, they would also need to consider going outside. Um, and having our ordinances updated, if they don't like the way our ordinances are and they want you to go around for that, they should also wait and have it reviewed to. To allow us to update our ordinances, we could remove the turbine requirement, but they would also be required to follow other issues. So they, like Heather said before, they can't have it both ways, they can't have us go around our ordinance for this one thing, but they wanna still follow our twenty-ten ordinance. For the other lack of, lack of issues that we have spelled out. And then I don't believe that energy companies do submit an extensive application like you were suggesting that gets reviewed. I believe they just, um, submit proof that they have a project to get their tax credits, they don't go through a permitting process or we could have that reference. In our application, and then the B O A is tasked with reviewing the application documents and not opening submission apartments, if it's just about requirements, that would be on the zoning administrator. They review the impact to the county resources, including acceptable levels of wildlife, like an acceptable. Levels of human impact.
Yes.
Um, so if it was just about the submission requirements, that's on my part, which is what I brought to you after discussing with them. The subjective aspect of reviewing all those, uh, studies that are required is to decide that impact on the county. So if you are taking over that role, I would hope that you would review all of those studies to decide that impact to the county. Um, and then also I would like to suggest talking with E M A to get their, uh, recording equipment to take to the bank. Um, so that it can be live streamed as well, they have really good equipment that travels pretty well and easy to set up. Easier than moving mail, so. Uh, and I agree with, I think everyone of Heather's comments as far as revisions and suggestions to, to revise the settlement agreement. Just to make it a little more robust to protect the county. Thank you.
Just as a follow-up for, for you, in, um, so the three different powers that government holds is judicial, quasi-judicial is what the, um. The Board of Adjustment holds, um, the Board of Supervisors also holds, uh, quasi-judicial, executive and legislative power. We make policy, we institute the policy within the state. Got the governor's office, and she's the executive, under her, under her power is to police and the police is, is, uh, given to the, uh, attorney general to enforce. And it all comes under, under that purview, so the power to police is under the executive. Just, it's, it may not spell it out specifically in three thirty-one, but just as our form of government is that, we, and we as supervisors under three thirty-one holdings it.
And that trip goes down to this level to override something specifically spelled out as a Board of Adjustment jurisdictional? Purview?
It says that it's a police power that doesn't, isn't not embodied in the Board of Adjustment as they are quasi-judicial board, not executive. That's specific in the code, that they're quasi-judicial. If there's zoning, or if there's a adjustment that's neat in a zoning district, that's quasi-judicial. But when you start, um, implementing policy or determining whether, uh, that policy is relevant, uh. With all the arguments that have been raised today, that, that's our, according to, is, is understood.
And did he give you any examples of where that had happened instead of going through Board of Adjustment? Cause I, I, I've followed extensive boards and I have not, like message boards, and I haven't heard of that happening where they have gone outside of that B O A conditional use process to have that police power. To take over the, the settlement agreement type that you're, you're discussing.
Yeah. So Washington County, they don't have a zoning or B O A?
No.
Which if they don't have zoning, I would see the supervisors taking over that power, but every place that has zoning ordinance and a Board of Adjustment. Do you have any cases where they have taken that power away from Board of Adjustment to make that review?
Well, I think that the, the decision will come forward, you know, we will make that determination at, at the appropriate time, once we have some more in line. However, if the Board of Adjustment doesn't embody police powers, and that's exactly, exactly, I, I think it's clear. As he's laid it out, that it is a police power, it's not a zoning, it's not a zoning or, or a quasi-judicial. Rule that we're coming to, to deny or approve of the myth. You need both, and so since they don't have one, we do, so I think it makes a lot of sense.
Well, in that case, I just hope that you do follow our enlisting ordinance as far as submission requirements and reviewing those studies that they have submitted. To review the impact to the county, um, in making your decision. Just submitting it does not give them an expectation of a, it should not anyway.
They're, they're submitting, they're submitting. Studies that have been approved by agencies that are designated for them.
No, they're submitting studies that they have purchased from companies to support their, their determination. Every study depends on who's running it, and these are not governmental studies, these are companies that they're hired to do studies to show impact, and that is what is reviewed. They're not approved studies, they're not government studies, they're companies that got paid to do a study in our area. And that is what is going to be reviewed by the Board of Adjustment or hopefully by you guys. Um, it's not just a box to check that they have bought a study and turned it in, the study is to use for review in that process and approval, and I.
Let's, let's play hypothetical, they already have their conditional use permit, they already have their permits. Let's just say Salt Creek one, and there, you become aware of an issue that they are violating within the raptor study. Um, who do you report it to?
Well, the.
Who does the administrator?
The raptor study is, is not a law, uh, it's what they, they searched for to show where their, um, where the current raptor nests are. And how many are in that area, so it's not, they're not violating a study, um.
By building or constructing a wind turbine or having them there currently without reporting it to who, who do they report it to?
Who does the company report it to?
Who would somebody with a concern report it to?
They would report, they should report it to me.
Oh.
But with the settlement for Salt Creek one, you said that I cannot take any action against Salt Creek one, so I would report that to you and you could take any action that you would want. Um.
Who would you report it to?
I'd report it to you.
Then who would I report it to?
You would take the legal action with your attorney to determine how you wanted to.
Who would that even say to where?
It wouldn't go back to anybody. It's pretty much within our county, unless it was, unless it was a bald eagle federally protected animal. It wouldn't be reported to any higher authority, and they have not gotten permits for any government studies for that raptor study, it is a purchase study. That they're submitting to the Board of Adjustment for them to review, if they're okay with the number of birds that are in that area, if they're okay with that possible loss of life in that area of birds. If they think that the bird raptor nests are far enough away from where they have sighted their turbines, because supposedly they use those studies to cite their turbines. It's just reviewing to make sure that, that they have provided that information and that the Board of Adjustment is acceptable with the number of raptors. In that location. If they think that four raptor nests within a mile of a turbine is unacceptable, they might turn it down. If they're like, well, your raptor nests are within a mile and a half, that's acceptable though, they'll likely go outside that. That would be for them to decide, that's a subjective, um, determination on those studies that are submitted. But if raptors are dying from the turbines, they could complain to me, but there's no law saying that they can't. They can't kill a raptor, so this is. If they've already received their permits, it is past the point of the studies, there's nothing I can do to review, oh, there, there's this complaint that there are all these birds dying. We can say, yes, we have received a study. The Board of Adjustment determined that the study was acceptable for that loss of life of raptors. There's nothing the county can do, if we find out this study was falsified somehow, that's a different story, that would be legal action, but it still would not be another government agency that is reporting it to. That would all be like a civil suit, or I don't even think it'd be a criminal suit because there, we don't have any law that says they can't have. A percentage of death with the raptor. a percentage of death with the raptors. Now, in the other case where they have not, for Salt Creek two, where they have not received their permits yet, if we're looking at that raptor study and the whole stack of other studies and the study came back saying there are four nests within a half mile of a turbine, I'd have to memorize this side of that one and memorize the elevation bird. Um, but if they come back saying, you know, if the report says they're X number within half a mile of a turbine, the board of adjustment might say, we don't find that acceptable where you have cited your turbines. We're going to turn down this application and then they would have to resubmit a different layout if they wanted to reapply again. Um, but yeah, the studies are not government studies and they're not government approval saying the government has reviewed your study and put a stamp on it. They have, they don't submit anything like that for the application. It's all paid for studies that they submit for the board of adjustment to review, to approve or deny. So if it was just, we need to turn in the study that we got from the government and it's part of our submission, then there's no subjective discussion at all. That would strictly go through zoning administrator to, to apply, you know, approve or deny a permit based on submissions. The reason it goes to the board of adjustment is because they review the different factors and weigh the impact on if it's an acceptable, uh, acceptable impact to humans, acceptable impact to wildlife, or if it's unacceptable. And that would determine if they approve or deny it. And it's not just the raptors. It's the noise level. It's the the shadow flicker, which we don't have that in ours right now, but, um, it, it's all the other studies. It's a noise level. It's communications, um, pathways. Uh, I, I mean, if you've read, if you've read their application, they say, you know, you may experience disruptions, but you can buy a booster. If the board of adjustment thinks that that's an unacceptable answer in their application, they might use that. Or if they're like, well, that seems reasonable, we'll approve that. It could go either way. Or, um, you know, if there's any number of things that they could decide from that number of studies. But that's why we require the studies is so that it can help inform the board of adjustments decision. So if you're taking that away from the board, I would hope that you would use that same, um, requirement of studies to review all those studies to make your informed decision and not just say, oh, they turned in a raptor study, they turned in a communication study. It's not a government approved study. One that they paid for that you are to review and make when you're decision. So it's not just a, a, you know, rubber stamp. They, they followed the step of a study that, you know, and they filled out all their other requirements that could sum their approval. The part of the B O A is to review that and make a decision based on the information they're given. The part where I was involved was, you know, if they didn't submit what you're requiring them to submit, then that, that might weigh more heavily than, you know, the way that a study went. And as far as the turbine model, yes, turbine models may change, but if you could at least, if you, if you go around board of adjustment, if you could at least have them require a height that they stick to and an output that they stick to and have it be a ring, you know, they could pick a different model as long as it's the same height and the same output model. Then the studies would still match. I understand that there are upgrades. But if you're saying we could pick any height that we want, as long as it's under the F A A ruling that we got approved for and that we did our setbacks for, that could be any varying, varying level of height and any level of diameter blade. They picked the smallest blade for their bird study. So that would manipulate the numbers. If they don't pick a model that matches the size that they did for their bird study, then that could vary how many birds are in the area of the blade or how near above the blade or how near below the blade. So do you see why, why that bird study would be important based on the model? Other things are different where it's like, well, yeah, if you get your biggest setbacks and you pick a smaller model, that's different. But the noise studies, um, they claim that the shorter ones are louder and that they're within the level. But we don't have any evidence backing up that the shorter ones are louder. So if they pick a model size, then we could at least say, okay, your study is based on this size, height of a model and this output. So then if they pick, you know, G E versus, I can't think of the other brand. Um, but if they pick a different model, as long as it's the same height and the same output, it should have relatively the same noise output. But if it's between the G E level one and the G E level six, I mean, you've got bigger blades, you've got more mechanical, um, interference with the blades going past post, which changes the sound. So yes, a taller one may have larger noise output, but that's something you review in the study. And so if you're not requiring at least a consistent height and mechanical output. I mean, if you, if you allow in your settlement a variance of different models, as long as you require the same height and electrical output between your conditional use approval and their building permit, that would at least give some regulation. If you say, yeah, you can pick any height you want, as long as it's shorter than six forty, you can pick any electrical outlet output you want because we're not going to require you to have a matching building permit to your conditional use permit. When they submit their building permit, anything they pick would be included because of that asterisk that says they can pick any model they want. So that's why it's also important to have that model. I, I understand what you were saying about upgrading models. But if you're changing the height and the output and any number of other factors by having all these different model numbers, that severely changes what your research studies had. And, and if we're going to say that they're going to follow our twenty-ten ordinance, I think you should at least actually follow the twenty-ten ordinance. Yes, in the past we haven't. But like, like my analogy was with the police chief. You can't hold the past board allowing, allowing them to bypass ordinances to hold you guys to say, oh, well, we have to bypass our ordinances because the people ten, fifteen years ago did. I mean, we could, it's in our ordinance. If they want us to change our ordinance to not require our model number, then let us change our ordinance, but then they have to follow everything else that we change with it. Or follow our ordinance as it's written. I mean, it's very slim. Follow that ordinance, but follow everything else in the ordinance. It's not that heavy lifting of an ordinance. It's, and it's been in place for fourteen plus years by the time they had submitted their occasion. They knew what they were walking into. They knew the cost of that application. They should not be able to use that cost of the research that is required in our application to claim vested rights. That's the cost of an application, not the cost of the project. And as Heather said, the vested rights would come if they've been given that permit already like Salt Creek one, but they, this is their initial permit request. The cost of that permit should not, should not give an expectation of approval. That's the whole point of having the process is to review your application. Not say, oh, you crossed all your Ts, you filled out all the right forms. We'll, we'll give you those tax credits. We'll give you that approval. This is to say, do we accept this impact to our county? And if they follow our ordinances, I, I have no professional reason to say anything against it. But if they're not following our ordinances, the only thing that's stated for my position in Iowa code is to enforce the county's ordinance. And that's why I've been so adamant about this. So I apologize if it's been passionate, but it's the only thing that's stated for a specific job duty is to enforce our.
So the F A A requires the vet study and the, the, um, the eagle study?
Oh, not that I'm aware of. They only require, um, you to list how tall your turbine is expected to be. And then they approve if that would impact any F A A, um, paths or nearby airports.
It's like a no obstructions is what the, they get approved for, that there's nothing blocking or in the way.
Before they'll approve the, this was my whole point for asking that question. Is there an agency that requires the study?
No, just us. We're requiring the study.
The F A A is now going to issue a permit to a project that hasn't submitted a study on file.
I have not seen anything on their website that requires them to submit a, um, study like that to get their permit approved. I spent a whole weekend looking through their website and they have nothing like that.
I've not spent my whole weekend doing it, however. I have a, I would find it, if there was anything, um, that would be out of the norm, I would think that there, there are so many animal rights groups that are, are typically protesting. Areas where they think that there is a valid concern. And I haven't seen, I haven't seen that with this project. Okay.
I think a lot of these rights groups make more noise than what they actually want to put into any labor or time, which is what you guys have all been doing. A huge part of why we're here is because things have changed dramatically in fourteen years. If those turbines then started out at two hundred and fifty feet, there, we didn't need most of the issues or concerns that are being brought up now. They, they were irrelevant. Um, my question is, when we're talking turbine heights, either Berms project or the one that's being, um, looked at right now. The height of a turbine is from the ground to the top of a blade or is it? Where, where's, what is the height?
To the tip of the blade.
To the top of the tip of the blade. Okay. So are, are we looking at eight hundred and fifty feet of this project here?
No, the maximum that they were approved for F A A, I believe is six hundred and forty.
The ground to chip. Yes.
The ones that they're currently putting in are four hundred and ninety-nine.
No, they're five hundred point three.
Okay. Five, sorry, I was, I was told they're four ninety-nine. That's from the.
I think Viennas are close. They're like four seventy-five to four ninety-nine, depending. Some are ten foot taller than.
Is that after they were raised?
After repowering. I don't remember what they, I guess they would have been, I don't know what they were before, because they put bigger blade things, but.
I had heard three fifty. So now you're saying that the Vienna project is up to?
They're like three seventy-five, four hundred. They're almost the same as what the Salt Creek ones are, three five.
No, now that they're five hundred and twenty-three.
No, four seventy-five to five hundred.
Oh.
And the Salt Creek one are five, just over five.
Five hundred point three, yeah, but.
Oh, okay. Got it.
You guys are gonna have to buy us lunch if we can continue. It's almost, it's almost done. Let's get breakfast.
You getting hungry? We don't hear any stomachs growls. We're probably okay.
We're still good.
Oh, Cheryl said hers is.
All right. Close of the comments. There's no other business coming before the Lord, which I think we're good. Uh, we should adjourn at eleven thirty. Two hours, exactly. Is that three hours?
Mike's better.